That was terse.
Good evening, Chatham. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Chatham Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees of July 9, 2024. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing none, I'll proceed with the reading. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023, signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This joint meeting of the Chatham Select Board and Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-45491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. The first order of business is to convene the meetings of both boards, and I'll start with the Affordable Housing Trust Board. Mr. Bean.
Present.
Mr. Avery.
Present.
Mr. Oppenheim.
Present.
Ms. Schneberg.
Present.
Ms. McClellan.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
And Mr. Shell is present. And now for the Select Board, Mr. Metters.
Present.
Mr. Deikin.
Present.
Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
And Mr. Shell is present. We have a long agenda. I will start just summarizing the part of it that is joint. The joint meeting is convened to consider housing development proposals for 1533/0 Main Street and 0 Meeting House Road properties. And we will hear in the first instance from our town manager and chief procurement officer regarding her award with respect to those properties. Before we do that, however, I am going to take up the one set of minutes which are joint minutes from, I believe it's June 11th, if I'm not mistaken here. June 11th, yes. So I will invite any, well, I'll invite a motion from each board for approval in a second, and then we'll take any comments that anybody has.
So moved.
And I'll do the same from the Affordable.
So moved.
Mr. Bean, yes?
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the, well, we don't need to separate the boards. I'll just take any comments that anybody has, starting, Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had three on page four, under item Romanum 05. I think Shereen Davis', his name is missing there. She was present at that meeting.
Actually, I appreciate that, but so is mine. So is mine.
Your name is missing too, I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's all right, you can leave me out, you can leave me out, that's all right. No problem.
Page eight, I think you may have caught this, Mike, under B, the second full paragraph, right in the middle, the third word in leasing, it should say sales.
Yes, I did catch that, and yes, you're right.
And then on page 10, it's the fourth full paragraph, Carol Gordon-Chatham, first line, moratorium on the negativity at, I would suggest what she was referring to is the negativity comments about. So I would strike the word at and insert the phrase comments about. She's here, so I know.
I'm fine with what you want to do. I thought this correctly reflected, that she was talking about negativity expressed at the meeting.
Okay.
Do you want to give us the answer, Carol?
I will withdraw.
Do you remember?
I do remember, yes. Okay. I think I had asked that you declare a moratorium on talking about the negativity from town meeting, and everyone was saying how terrible it was because the citizens actually voted something down, and I was, thought that we were, we all heard it, and we were, time to move on.
Okay. I think you're probably closer to accurate than I am, so.
Then I'll reinstate them.
You can reinstate the comment.
That's it.
Any other comments? I just had, apart from the one that you had, Dean, I had, well, I had one that I think has been taken care of in colloquy with Ms. Lewis. On page seven, at the top, in the second line in the parentheses, it says 36 units. I haven't had a chance to look at the slide that had 36 in it. The, there's no doubt that Penrose's proposal was for 48 units, but they may have said something about the minimum of 36 that was in the RFP, and I'll collaborate with Carol, with your permission, sorry, with Kathy to sort that out, to make sure it's accurate. I think on page eight, the first full paragraph, Kathy's gone back and looked at the tape and has some substitute language for that paragraph. I don't know if you have it in front of you, Kathy, but I think it's a little more accurate than what's stated here.
Yes, you're referring to the statement about Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Yes, so I went back and watched and amended it to read, Mr. Adams stated that Penrose has withdrawn their application from the Orleans project because they wanted to be able to prioritize the Chatham projects if awarded and ensure they upheld their high standards of work.
Okay. Thank you, and that's all I had. If there are no further comments, I'll take, we'll first go to the Select Board, Select Board Member Metters.
Aye.
Select Board Member Nacastro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Deikens.
Abstain.
And Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Shell says aye. To the Affordable Housing Trust, Mr. Bean.
Aye.
Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Mr. Oppenheim.
Aye.
Ms. Schneberg.
Aye.
Ms. McClellan.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. So we are now to the part of the joint meeting where we have the discussion of the town manager as chief procurement officer's award of development rights for properties in the request for proposals at Main Street and Meeting House Road, and with that, I'll turn it over to the town manager slash chief procurement officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the Select Board, and the Affordable Housing Trustees. We're here tonight because I have, after careful consideration of all the proposals and supporting documentations, including the review by the evaluation committee and their ratings, it's my intention to award the development rights to 1533 Main Street and 0 Meeting House Road tomorrow, July 10, to Penrose. The award of the project, development rights per the RFPs, will be subject to conditions, such as compliance with the requirements of the RFP and negotiation and execution of a purchase and sale agreement for real property, as well as an agreement land development/disposition agreement approval, with approval by the Select Board and the trust. So as I had gone through the evaluation committee's recommendation, I wanted to take time to do my own due diligence as well, and having an evaluation committee is not new to our procurement process. We used it for 11 George Ryder Road with the procurement or disposition of that land, ultimately to Habitat for Humanity, and that was done by the trust. And then, more commonly, I use it with staff as the evaluation or evaluators for projects like the Wells 10 and 11, the water improvements, RFPs for various infrastructures, and regular procurements. And so what's a little different about this process is that there's joint interest by both the Select Board and the trust as well. And so in putting together the evaluation committee, I put forward it with all of you as members, and I know it was a little complicated and certainly appreciate all of the time and review, but I do think it was a successful outcome by the evaluation committee, and I believe that the committee's recommendation reflects a thorough and balanced evaluation. So my report has a lot of details, but presuming that most of you read it, I did want to note exactly what the recommendation by the evaluation committee was for the public. And so in my report, I note that based on the individual evaluations, the ranking was in favor of Penrose for both properties at a vote of six to four. There were 10 members on the evaluation committee, and while the actual vote on June 5th was done in executive session, the evaluator spoke of your preferences and ultimately your votes at the meeting on June 11th. The vote was, a recommendation by the evaluation committee, was to award the Main Street property to Penrose at a vote of six to one, and to award the Meeting House property also to Penrose at a vote of five to two. My staff report talks about the process of how we got here, the community engagement for over a year and a half, and putting the RFPs together and looking at the scope. This was the first time that we had a large property, and two properties in fact, to work through what we wanted on those properties. And I think that the public engagement provided for another good outcome of the RFP scope, which did have a moderate preference for rentals, but it laid out a lot of opportunities for the developers. Two of the developers for the Main Street property came in with rental options, as you know, and one developer came in with home ownership options for attainable housing. Respecting the committee's recommendation, for me, maintains the integrity of the process. And I feel that it's really important that that not be undershadowed because of the exciting time that we have before us tonight of awarding two properties development opportunities and getting closer to the Select Board and community goals of affordable and attainable housing. So I wanted to elaborate just a little bit on my report, and I wanted to talk about addressing the housing diversity and our immediate needs. And as you know, and most of us have discussed in detail, Chatham's experiencing a severe lack of year-round housing, and it's leading to a displacement of families, some who are forced to leave the property because of the property sale, others because the property might be converted to short-term rentals. But for the last couple of years, I've heard some really sad stories about families having to move, and those families maybe not quite ready for home ownership, whether it's market rate, attainable, or affordable. And so I think that the rental housing at both properties, as proposed by Penrose, for approximately 90 townhomes and some stacked units, stacked flats, is a first step for providing our much-needed housing and for a range of income levels. I do think that this RFP process, or the award, is just the beginning, and it's a first step towards our long-term housing strategy. There are two other properties that the town currently owns that provide great opportunities for ownership. One is the Stepping Stones property, and the other one is Old Harbor Road, but that decision hasn't been made yet, and that will also go through a public vetting process. And I know that the Affordable Housing Trust continues to explore opportunities for expanding affordable housing, including encouraging property owners to sell or donate their properties to the trust. We've had a few great successes, and I think there's a couple of more that will be coming very soon. I also want to talk a little bit about the ensuring transparency and public involvement in the development process. I'm not sure, we've had a lot of discussions about what the comprehensive permit 40B process is. We certainly have our new town council, Jay Tallerman, on to provide some details. But I think with the developer, Penrose, that there will be a greater emphasis on public engagement throughout the development process, ensuring ongoing transparency and community involvement. And as I said, town council Jay can elaborate on that. I think it's important that we work with a partner with a really great architect, and Penrose has Union Studio, they have been involved in the Cape Cod Commission, working for their missing middle initiatives, and I think that they will really understand the development and what it should look like in Chatham in particular. I also believe with Penrose, they have a wealth of experience and that works for their rental opportunities in townhomes and providing a sense of a community. I've been a renter in my life, and I don't feel that I was less engaged or active in the community just because of the rental status, and I don't think that that is a compelling factor. I think people who need homes and need a place to live will invest in their community, and I think that's really important. I also want to talk about the funding opportunities that Penrose provides, and their financial model contemplates a payment to the trust for the property acquisition with some requested offsets for both properties, but in the end, it could potentially provide more than $1 million to reinvest into the trust and into affordable and attainable housing. I do think that Penrose's experience in securing financing and leveraging various funding sources makes their proposals particularly viable and promising for Chatham. There's a lot more that I could say, but I do feel very comfortable with my recommendation, and it does require, because of the joint interest, an affirmation by both boards, and tonight is the night that I'm respectfully requesting that. I do think that the proposed rental housing developments represent a critical step towards addressing Chatham's housing needs, promoting housing diversity, and ensuring a vibrant and sustainable community, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jill. I think, and you've stated, first of all, I should have said at the outset, welcome to Jay Tallerman, who is the new town council. We look forward to a long and productive relationship, and I'm sure you'll have an opportunity to help us out tonight with any questions that come up. In response to Jill's invitation for questions, I think before the board comment, the board's comment or whatever, that this is an appropriate spot to invite the public to make comments, inquire of Jill and/or anybody else, town council, and generally to participate in the discussion alongside of the town manager and the two boards. So I will, there are two microphones, there's the podium over there, one here in the middle. Please state your name and your residence, and are there any questions? Yeah, Ms. Gibbs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It wasn't until 5:35 Friday evening, when there was a Chathamese game and a band concert going on, that the document was added to the packet, I'm sorry? Is someone saying something?
I think it was a cough.
When a document was added to the packet stating Penrose had been chosen. Due to its importance to many, it should have been posted a week ago across all media platforms that a decision was going to be made tonight. I think there would be a lot more people here if that had occurred. After developers' presentations on June 11th, I sent a letter June 19th to the Select Board as to why Penrose shouldn't be chosen. I asked for confirmation that it had been received and read, following up twice with those who never responded 13 days later. 13 days later, I finally heard from Chairman Shell, "Dear Ms. Gibbs, I respond neither to your imperious insistence nor to your presumptuous sense of entitlement. I respond to end the fortnight of demanding emails treating me and my colleagues as if they were subjects of a service of legal process." In Chairman Shell's opinion, in the public record now, private citizens, taxpayers who aren't in total agreement with the Affordable Housing Trust majority direction are imperious, presumptuous, demanding, and entitled for expecting a fraction of the respect extended to those who agree with them. We also pay taxes in town. I sent my letter to the Select Board to be shared with the Affordable Housing Trustees. I didn't send it to Penrose and didn't intend it to have, be shared with them, or I would have copied them. It's exactly what Orleans took issue with regarding Penrose, resulting in the resignation of an Orleans Affordable Housing Trustee. The town manager was provided with 22 pages of emails, correspondence from an Orleans resident. My letter was forwarded by Chatham staff to Penrose, requesting a response, giving Penrose, in my opinion, an unfair advantage over the other developers to make their case before a decision was made. My letter, Penrose's response, and the Orleans emails are not in the packet for public review. On June 11th, every developer was given ample opportunity to present their proposals to the public. Penrose could have sufficiently answered the questions then and didn't. Penrose's response to my letter wasn't un-Penrose stationary, with no identification of the project name or location. It wasn't signed by Mr. Adams or whomever wrote it, and it had no date. Any promises, assurances, or changes now in an unofficial, unsigned piece of mail outside of the RFP, in my view, is meaningless, contractually non-binding, and unenforceable, and shouldn't be considered. With respect to the actual Penrose proposal, all 90 of the Penrose-proposed units on the two properties range from a 30% to 110% annual median income for Barnstable County. They all require deed restrictions at their respective AMIs as a condition of the grants, loans, and subsidies. We finally received confirmation that if Chatham's needs and demographics change, the deed restrictions can never be changed or removed. We are stuck with all of them at those AMIs in perpetuity. That means not being able to raise the AMIs, no market rate, and no ownership ever, because the deed restrictions don't allow it. We could find in a matter of a few years that tenants who will qualify will have absolutely no connection to Chatham or the Cape, and the unknown local preference percentage, eventually determined by the state for Chatham, is for one year only. Local preference percentages, the rest of it opens up to the general lottery potentially throughout the state. As a profit, the 100% affordable housing and density was designed to maximize Penrose subsidies, grants, and loans on every affordable housing unit, allowing a low upfront bid. There's almost, there's no ownership option because it costs more to the developer as ownership is not subsidized. That's why hack numbers are higher. We may save money in the short term, but we'll end up with a project by Penrose that we don't want. Penrose's design and density don't accomplish any of the objectives that we've been promised for the last three years: stable year-round housing to buy or rent, for those who live, work, or have children in the school system, those who wish to age in place, and those who may not otherwise financially qualify, with a quality of life we expect. financially qualify, with a quality of life we expect for them, as we would for ourselves and our children. The structures are too high, too large, too dense, with insufficient parking intentionally limited to control tenant movement for basic necessities by foot, bike, or public transportation, and that was said in their RFP. No guest parking, no private green space, no mature landscaping to screen from the road, and a too-large community building, half of which is Penrose office, for them to run their business out of. It's morphed from year-round to workforce. Penrose isn't being chosen because of the great design and quality of life for our community we expected, but because of their low price to avoid coming to voters for approval for additional funding. We apparently have to choose Penrose to find out what the end result will actually look like, how much it will ultimately cost, what the quality of construction and materials will be, what the rents will be, and who will ultimately qualify as tenants, and from where. With the Affordable Housing Trustee's insistence for sole authority comes an expectation of due diligence, and I would disagree that that has occurred. No decision should be made on any contract award until the legally required housing production plan and needs assessment are completed and presented in late July. You're putting the cart before the horse. If you haven't, every member of the select board and trust should visit the Village at Nauset Green, completed four years ago by Penrose, to see the construction and the materials used, the outdoor space, the exposed air conditioning systems everywhere, the current landscaping and its upkeep. I have. Is that what you want and expect for Chatham? I hope not. And that development has only six units per acre versus 16 units per acre of 1533 Main. The Planning Board, Conservation, Historic Commission, and ZBA all visit properties before approvals. The select board, Affordable Housing Trust, town manager, and staff should be required to do the same. But most importantly, the Mouse Housing Corporation provides funding to towns and strongly recommends retaining an independent affordable housing consultant specialist to review the financials. It is standard operating procedure by other towns on the Cape. It is inexplicable that staff and the town manager haven't done such a financial review before a contract is awarded, which was also recommended by two of the trustees and two select board members as well. Penrose's projected revenues are overly optimistic with outrageously high rents projected for affordable housing, and those numbers will not stand. When you all move on to something else, which you will all eventually do, Chatham will have to live with the impact and unintended consequences of the decisions to choose Penrose forever. An Affordable Housing trustee demanded two trustees resign for supporting the local nonprofit HAC alternative option with two select board members in a letter to the editor as insulting and in bad faith. Those four people happen to represent the position of most of the public. HAC's proposal far exceeded Penrose by every measure. Corners are being cut for the sake of expediency. It is a disservice to Chatham and what we were promised. Chatham should be the model for a small community. We are not Hyannis, and we are not Boston. We can do it fast and cheap, or we can do it right, but you can't do both. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any hands up here. I'm going to call on Mr. Buckley, who is in the remote. I assume that's you, Mr. Buckley.
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask the chair if, I'd like to understand more about what's going on and some of the points that were just made by the previous speaker, but can I listen, can we listen to the discussion first and then offer any additional thoughts at some point later? Or do we?
We're going to give everybody a chance to speak. At the moment, Ms. Goldsmith has made her presentation and indicated what her decision will be, and before the two boards respond to the need for an affirmation, we're giving the public an opportunity to comment before the boards act.
Okay. I would like to comment before the board acts, but this is premature for me. I need to, I need to understand how, I need to understand more. I'm certainly, you know, in favor of developing the former Buckley property, because if it wasn't for me, you wouldn't have it before you. So I'm just asking for some deference as far as offering the most thoughtful, I don't want to have a broad, I don't want to reiterate what the previous speaker said, but I'd like to hear how the board and the trust respond to that before I, I'd like to, I'd like to understand their thinking more before I respond willy-nilly.
I'll tell you what, let's see where we are with time after we give the rest of the public an opportunity to comment, and the board has their comments, and we'll see where we are.
Okay. I just want to say, it would just be one, one particular paragraph that I want to speak to, which is about the 40B process and the, quote, "robust" public engagement that's expected. So I wanted to hear more from Mr. Tallerman about that process before I commented on it. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon.
I want to know, why are we here? You know, it was announced just recently that Penrose is probably going to be awarded the contract for Chatham's two largest affordable housing communities. If this is so, if the decision is made, why are we even entertaining public comment? Will we, will we, the public, change your mind? I doubt it. You have heard endless facts, comments opposing Penrose. You've received numerous emails and letters opposing Penrose, all from Chatham citizens, some from your own colleagues. I'd like to hear the level of support you receive for Penrose from the Chatham citizens. I'm sure it's somewhere in the public record. We are supposed to trust, trust you to do what's best for Chatham. It's difficult to keep that trust alive when you continue to ignore the facts and concerns your citizens have, that your citizens bring to you. Someone once told me, it's like when, when my wife and I go out to dinner, I choose a restaurant she's not particularly fond of, but after we go, she decides she likes it. You've decided where we're going. We may not like the final outcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it matter?
Either one.
Ann Dixon, West Chatham. I just have some questions, and I'm glad that Nauset Green was mentioned. After it's done, I understand Penrose is an out-of-state Pennsylvania company. They've hired local management. I'd like to know about the accountability of when people are in there, and how it's run, and how the management is, et cetera. And I don't know if you have conversed with Nauset Green and Eastham Housing Authority at all about that. I do happen to know a couple of people live there, and there are some issues. So the accountability of the follow-up of the management of, through Penrose, as the major manager, I believe, who hires local management, how they follow through with, you know, accountability of what's happening behind the closed doors of these units. So that's all I really feel I can, comfortable to say.
Thank you. Ms., yeah, Ms. Timson?
I'm Ann Timson, a longtime Chatham property owner, starting in 1952. I am speaking for many residents who could not be here tonight due to guests and family events. Your timing is tough for all of us. For several years, three members of the select board have promoted the concept of affordable housing as a solution for town employees, including fire and rescue, police, and teachers. Yes, all these folks would like to own homes in Chatham. They want to put their hard-earned wages into an investment for the future rather than fritter away savings on overpriced rentals. We, the public, would like to know why you voted for Penrose with no homeownership units planned for the Main Street Buckley property. That is my first question. I hope you will answer it tonight before you vote. Secondly, on the subject of architectural design, Union Studio, chosen by Penrose, has created far more professional and aesthetically pleasing as well as architecturally appropriate renderings. Facades are artfully broken up by first-floor overhanging roof lines, and there has been an attempt to replicate at least some of the more typical vintage rural seaside architectural familiar to the old Cape. On the other hand, the HAC renderings are made up of a series of box-like structures with extremely flat, stark facades and no architectural detail to give visual relief. What appear to be stark, plain facades on the rendering will be magnified in height when actually on site. Unfortunately, HAC has a much smaller density, and most of us support that smaller density. Design, need for homeownership, keeping to a practical cost for the taxpayer, and low density appear to be the big questions you, our boards, need to address. For so many residents, so many residents think that has not been achieved. We question whether you could alter either Penrose or HAC proposals in order to return us to your original goals. Option one would be Penrose rethink their proposal to include partial homeownership with the understanding that monies requested from Affordable Housing Trust and taxpayers would increase in order to reach this goal. Or option two, would you consider requesting HAC to hire Union Studios to create a design with the understanding that the town might have to increase their investment? We have almost $3 million at present in the Affordable Housing Trust fund, and as select board member Dean Nacastro suggested, all $3 million could go towards that investment, and the rest could be voted on at the next town meeting. Or the town could hire Union Studio and pay them directly, working in conjunction and partnership with HAC if they would agree. Our most longstanding housing authorities, Carolyn McClellan and Bruce Bean, have voted for HAC, and two select board members have chosen that route as well. I and many others respectfully support their choice and still would like to know why the town manager and six other board members chose to disregard the needs of so many who work in Chatham and many who live in Chatham and are looking to downsize. Finally, if you want young families to call Chatham their permanent home, which is what you keep saying, then provide a home, not a rental unit. Thanks for listening and for all your work and service on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody at the moment. Mr. Levitt?
Rick Levitt, West Chatham. I want to compliment both boards, the town manager and the town staff. All of us appreciate the extensive and sensitive work involved with planning for a better Chatham, with housing opportunities for all households. I want to note also that you've come a long way from those early days when preliminary concepts prompted so much concern and public opposition. I have provided with you over the weekend a modified HAC plan. I support the HAC plan, but I also respect the town manager's decision for Penrose. So let me offer you another modified plan. One-third of the 48 Main Street units should be housing for households that do not qualify for low-income subsidized housing, but also cannot afford to buy a house in Chatham. Teachers, fishing families, firefighters, police, EMTs, healthcare, and business professionals, and others, many of whom are on the town staff. The town meeting warrant article to purchase the Main Street site, and the town manager's extensive comments at town meeting, that was in 2021, explicitly stated that the Main Street purchase was for both affordable and attainable housing. That is not the Penrose proposal. That commitment to voters needs to be fulfilled. Low-income housing projects are out of favor in today's community planning world. Mixed-income housing is a fundamental planning principle, essential to the success of Chatham's housing initiative, and has been pointed out here today by previous speakers, enjoys substantial support from both boards, the Chronicle Editorial Board, and public opinion. The evaluation committee's decision, your decision, predated the very recent good news, very recent good news, that the state approved Chatham's request for liberalizing housing development. It just came out a week ago. Trust funds for subsidizing households earning up to twice-average income can now be funded with hotel, motel room, and short-term rental taxes paid by transient visitors. Chatham taxpayers won't be subsidizing much-needed attainable housing for the many working households that do not qualify for the state's subsidized housing program. That's a big deal, a very big deal. I recommend that you affirm the town manager's decision with instructions to negotiate with Penrose that of the 48 units on Main Street, 16 be ownership homes for households earning up to 200% of AMI. Thank you.
Thank you. I see, I see it, Jill. You're talking about Ms. Stern?
I know that we have another person online, and then, did you want to go to Town Council?
Jay, yes, I do. Ms. Stern, and then we'll go to, then we'll go to Town Council.
Good evening. Nicole Stern. I found the decision by our town manager to choose Penrose for the Affordable Housing developments mind-boggling. Orleans took the high road after Penrose's inappropriate behavior, and Chatham should have done the same. Penrose wants us to believe that it was merely a coincidence that they withdrew their proposal for the government-priced development in Orleans, but it is all on the public record. I'd like to thank the select board members, Nacastro and Metters, for standing in opposition to the town manager's selection. I believe if they and the two Affordable Housing trustees, McClellan and Bean, provided a good common sense reason for voting differently, they acted in the town's best interests, not on behalf of special interests. Penrose is a for-profit corporation. The higher the building, the denser the community, the more profit they earn. What they will produce is not what most townspeople want or would vote for if given their chance, but that opportunity is not being offered. There is no reason why we can't provide- There is no reason why we can't provide excellent opportunities for low and moderate-income households and at the same time, provide the best of Chatham. Our town officials must be thinking about all of us, protecting all of us and the character of Chatham, or is that just wishful thinking? Thank you.
Thank you. There was a question about the 40B process. Jay, could you maybe give us a bit of a high-level sense of assuming that we, that Jill makes the award tomorrow and we go forward with Penrose, what the succeeding process and particularly the 40B comprehensive permit process is? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, the board, for bringing me on. We're thrilled to be back in town, and we're excited to be working on this really important project. So as we know, there's going to be some amount of process after an award to arrive at the necessary agreements, land disposition, purchase and sale agreement, negotiation of other important elements of these projects prior to permitting. The permitting process is going to be twofold. On the zoning end, the first would be negotiation and execution of an application for project eligibility, likely under the local initiative program operated by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. That is a process that involves public comment. It involves a site visit. It involves review of several elements of the proposal. It takes a month or two, maybe perhaps even a little bit longer if additional issues or amendments to the project are seen as advantageous by the subsidizing agency. And after that, project eligibility is issued. We start the next phase, a slightly bigger phase in terms of scope and time, and that would be the application to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That application is a public hearing, like any other zoning process. It would commence roughly 30 days after an application is received by the Zoning Board of Appeals. By law, it can last 180 days and sometimes longer than that, depending upon need for extensions. And at every step of the way, it would be an open public hearing at which comments would be received. There would also be robust peer review, paid for by the applicant, and other opportunities for public discourse by not only members of the public, but interested town departments and officials. And that is, in a nutshell, the comprehensive permit process. There are appellate rights stemming from that process as well for aggrieved members of the public as well as public entities. But the process unfolds generally along those lines.
Thank you very much. Any further comments, questions, or thoughts from the public? Two minutes, real quick, Rick?
Actually, less than that. I had a question for Jay. In addition to the ZBA, will the town's Historic Business District Commission be consulted with respect to the Main Street property, which is in the Historic Business District?
So through the chair, yes. So as a requirement of law and probably local rules, although we'll work closely with the land use departments to tune up those local rules as necessary, all boards that would have, would have had original jurisdiction will get notice and an opportunity to comment and participate in the 40B process. The zoning board would assume the role of any local historic commissioner, local historic district commission, and administer that process, including potential requests for waivers from an applicant, which they're entitled to under Chapter 40B or may be entitled to under Chapter 40B. But it would be our hope and it is usual, our usual expectation that entities such as a historic district commission or a historical commission, that they would provide written or oral testimony to the board along with any recommended conditions of approval or reasons for amendments to the project. It is, even though it is centralized at the Zoning Board of Appeals, the state encourages and the process encourages robust roles for the various boards and commissions of the town.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, I'm not sure what you're going to be talking about later, but I would like to know if anyone during that discussion has been to the village at Gossick Green and whether or not you are going to get an independent financial analysis by an affordable housing specialist. Those two questions I'd really like answered. Thank you.
I can say I've been there.
I can say I've been there.
I have as well.
I have.
I have not.
I have.
I have.
I have.
I have not.
Okay, as to the second one, Ms. Gibbs, I'm going to defer that to commentary from the board. I'm going to go to, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Buckley, do you, do you want to have your comment now?
Yes, thank you. That was, I did want to hear from Town Council before I commented on the, what's being proposed for the 40B process for, for additional improvements, hopefully, in the proposed action. And so anyway, one of those things is, even though I guess he's probably technically correct and legally correct in what he just told us, the average person, like, and I consider myself somewhat average. I still don't know if, what's still negotiable as far as number of parking spaces, whether or not there could still be an element of homeownership, things like that. I don't expect the answers, they don't have to be tonight. But I mean, for the public to feel like they're part of this process, including myself, that, that they understand what, what, what they can comment on, what they can suggest, and, and what they can, what's outside that realm. And that's the same problem that I think happened with the RFP. We were told we can't prescribe too much, but they didn't, we didn't know what that, what that line was, what was being over. And I'd like, one other thing I'd like to say is that I live in a, I own an affordable housing unit with my wife. We pay mortgage. We didn't, we didn't win the lottery and get it for free. I just want to make sure people understand that the lottery doesn't mean you get a free house. And if it wasn't for that, I don't know if we, if I'd still be living in Chatham and if this property at 1533 Main Street would have, whether or not I would have even offered it for affordable housing. So there could be somebody in the future who owns a unit there, who, whatever circumstances, turns around and pays it forward in the future. So I just want to point that out, that, that one aspect. So thank you very much.
Jay, do you want to take a crack at the question of what's negotiable, at least in a general sort of way?
Sure, and I think it's actually a really good question because there are two processes here, one of which has a little bit more flex than the other. The process that you all are discussing tonight, which is the tail end of the procurement process, there's less wiggle room now because there was a response to RFPs, and as a condition of an award, we can't really require much in the way of changes or melding of projects through the procurement process. But nothing that the boards are doing right now with respect to the award in any way handcuffs the Zoning Board of Appeals in their overall review of this project and ultimate issuance of a permit decision. And I've been doing 40B work for 25 years, and there are, there is rarely an instance where a project leaves the zoning board the same as it came in. Sometimes the tweaks are small and sometimes they're large, but they can include everything from, I heard, parking mentioned. Certainly, there could be changes in terms of the parking. The size, shape of the buildings are always fair game. The number of units gets discussed. Issues regarding changes to tenancy or homeownership versus rental are a little more peculiar because it impacts the subsidy that they would be working under. But I've certainly seen some subtle switches in that. It gets a little difficult to manage under Chapter 40B and through the state under the Affordable Housing Programs. But there is an opportunity for the zoning board to have a further review, complete, whether it's the programmatic details or the brick-and-mortar details, and to tweak that through the decision process under Chapter 40B.
Thank you. I think I'm going to turn to the boards and offer them an opportunity, number one, to ask Jill if you, if you have any questions of Jill, if you have any comments before we invite a motion. Anybody on either side here? Go ahead, Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to ask any questions. I'm just, I'm just going to take, give my two cents worth. I do appreciate the town manager calling me last week, giving me a heads up of the intention of awarding, recommending the award to Penrose. I can't stress how disappointed I am in that decision. We, this whole process has been a very long, uncomfortable road. A lot of time and effort, great intentions. The intentions for housing are pure. We need it, we desperately need it. Having two parcels, the one, the Meeting House Road and Buckley property, we don't get many opportunities like this. Don't get them. And a couple of things I learned in the process. One, to us, Chatham, these are big, these are big parcels, big opportunities. Some of the developers out there, they're too tiny. They really don't generate enough income for us. Learned that firsthand with Penrose and their presentation to the First Trust. Ms. Davis happened to be absent. I was invited into that meeting, and it was clear that it was both projects or nothing. The numbers just didn't allow them to exercise anything other than both projects, which turned me off a little bit. We're chasing numbers right now. There's a 200 unit in the next couple of years, number that's been floated around there. We're looking at quantity versus quality. I've been around this town for a long time. What I've been hearing is homeownership, elements that frankly the Hack project presented. Were there, are there hurdles to that? Absolutely. But this is where the voter should weigh in. If this is what, this is what I'm hearing that the public wants. If they don't want it, they're going to vote it down, but at least give them the opportunity to weigh in on it. We need a mixture of housing, rentals, ownership, you name it. We're going to have other parcels moving forward. Stepping Stone is an example. You know, I, I think we rolled out the RFPs poorly. I don't like how we engage or sometimes did not engage with the public. I think we could have done a better job. Not my style. It was done. You know, we, 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 Chatham should be leading the way on this housing. You really should. I'm not going to say this is a failure if it moves forward. It's, this was determined months, weeks ago. Penrose will get the award. We all know it. I don't think anything that's been said tonight is going to change the position of these, this board here. But I'm disappointed because they're setting the tone for the community moving forward. We should be leading the way. It's just, I feel this is a being a lost opportunity. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to say it's a failure. Because any housing, housing is desperately needed to. So anything we move forward, giving housing is not a failure. But I think this is a, this truly is a lost opportunity for the community. And, you know, I hope that everyone who feels one way or another, please speak up and speak your piece. But this one, this one really, this one really bothers me. So thank you.
Thank you. Dean? Go ahead, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a statement I wanted to read, but I did want to comment on something the town manager said. She is coming to us not because she's legally required to, as prior Town Council had advised in response to my inquiry, but because she's looking for our blessing. It's a blessing I'm not going to give. I am a no vote on the town manager's recommendation. I think it is a foolish decision premised on a lack of financial due diligence, and I believe that the result was ineluctably realized through a process that was rushed, unimaginative, insufficiently considerate of the role of the select board, and inattentive to public opinion. Let's start with the town manager's written submittal first, and this might simply be a clerical or research error. The memo states that the evaluation committee began reviewing the submitted proposals on April 25th. In fact, the town manager's memo appointing the committee was issued on May 8th. This was just, just over two weeks prior to my being out of the country, as had been scheduled for months in advance, allowing very little time to participate in the process. In fact, the first meeting of the evaluation committee did not take place until May 15th. Why the hurry? The town manager's memo goes on to state, quote, "This trust and select board, working with the town's Housing and Sustainability Director, and in consultation with Town Council, provided the scope for the RFPs within the guidelines discussed at public meetings." Quote. At what meeting was the select board permitted to provide the scope for the RFPs? The one on February 20th, when select board member Nacastro suggested the deletion of just one word, the adjective preferred, so as to remove the stated preference for additional density, and was met with this response from my good friend, the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, quote, "I am not going to negotiate one word here at this stage of the game," end of quote. The town manager talks about the recommendation of the evaluation committee and mentions that Mr. Metters and Mr. Nacastro were not in attendance at the crucial June 5th meeting, quote, "but their evaluations had been submitted and noted for the record," quote. Let me add for the record that our non-attendance was based on prior conflicting commitments. Was any consideration given to rescheduling that session to a date when both Mr. Metters and I could participate to argue our respective positions? And what about the Affordable Housing Trust meeting on May 1st, when all the developer presentations were made, and because of the open meeting law, neither Mr. Dykens nor I were able to attend? To this day, neither of us has heard the full original presentations, and we never will. That May 1st meeting also could have been rescheduled to allow for full select board member attendance. The town manager states in her report, quote, "I trust all, that all evaluation committee members considered the above-noted community input," end of quote. What community input is she talking about? The public survey results, which expressed a decided plurality preference against high density? Or the Affordable Housing Trust public forum back on January 17th, where similar public concerns were voiced about a 50- or 60-unit development of 1533 Main Street? Finally, the town manager's memo talks dollars and cents based on the Penrose submittal. But perhaps most importantly of all, shouldn't we wait on making a selection until we have a financial analysis, just as they've done in Orleans and Brewster? This was not done here in Chatham, and that goes to the issue of due diligence. I suspect some others might want to tell us how smart they are, but anything less than the expert examination required here is amateur hour. Let me insert here that in large part, I think the town manager has been placed in an unenviable position, directed by a headlong race for total numbers of units on the part of majorities on both the Affordable Housing Trust Board and the Select Board, conveniently woven together by having a common share. Nonetheless, she is the procurement officer, and I think she could have made a better decision. Now let's look at the Penrose proposals. I want to treat with Meeting House Road respectfully because that was purchased solely with Affordable Housing Trust funds, and therefore lies within their responsibility. But is anyone ever going to please provide Gloria Hicks with a full response to her concerns about a butter access? That's in the RFP, but the Penrose proposal and the public comment from the Penrose representative on June 11th offer no specifics. As for 1533 Main Street, the Buckley property, the parking is inadequate. Some of the buildings are too high. The 48 units flies in the face of public sentiment. There is a longer wait for occupancy to begin than in the Hack proposal, and most unfortunately, it is strictly a rental model, unlike the Hack proposal for ownership, which would do more to invite occupancy by those with a long-term occupancy by those with a long-term stake in the community. For the town to rely on a pure rental model and to take a pass on ownership is backward-looking and a lost opportunity, but apparently, an opportunity not lost on the town of Barnstable. Just last week, the Cape Cod Times reported on its front page that Hack is planning a 50-unit development on Hyannis, which will be fully an ownership model, aimed at critical workforce housing. Why can't we have that in Chatham? The governor just signed our home rule legislation that will allow Chatham to use 1% of its short-term rental tax monies to fund attainable housing. There's over $1 million available in FY 2024 alone. That money could help support an ownership model as Hack has proposed. But we are shortsightedly stuck in the past, and should we be surprised? Chatham has a long history of missing the boat. Literally. We let Orleans have the famed Coast Guard rescue boat. We let the boathouse itself go up to Quincy. We failed to see the Main Street school as the prime location for consolidating town departments into a real town hall, and instead shoehorned into it a community center operation which could have been better housed as a purpose structure elsewhere. And we failed to accept political reality and build a new center for seniors at 193 Stony Hill Road for just $6 to $7 million. The list can go on, but the point is clear, and this is not simple moaning about what could have been. As Santayana wrote, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." The illustrious Lowell family of Boston have as their motto two words in Latin, "Occasionem cognosque," know your opportunity. Sadly, I think that in this instance, I would be reluctant to ascribe that motto to Chatham, its town manager, a majority of its Affordable Housing Trust Board, or a majority of the Select Board. I urge the town manager to reconsider her decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, I don't have a written, a written statement to counter the cavalcade of, of a litany of complaints and/or grievances that the leaders of the town have come up with, but I can certainly give some background on my participation in this and why I decided, why I, why I did. Chatham is behind the eight ball with the development of affordable housing. I believe the number is seven in 10 years is the correct number, seven in 10 years. We are abysmal. We have an abysmal track record to provide affordable housing in this town. Abysmal. Now we have an opportunity with a, a, a dedicated, experienced developer to provide affordable housing for our citizens and for the future. 90 units. These folks know what they're doing. They'll get it done. They'll get it done so that we don't drain the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We'll have monies left with which to invest elsewhere in town to buy properties and/or to develop other properties. We can have housing, affordable housing, and we can have homeownership in this town. We can have both. We have the opportunity right now to have both. We can develop Main Street, and we can develop Meeting House. We also have stepping stones that I would argue vociferously and adamantly to be homeownership. We also have 127 Old Harbor Road, which at some point, when we get to it, should be two units of housing in my mind, condos or whatever, but homeownership. And if we preserve the funds in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we will have the principal with which to make future investments for homeownership. But the Penrose option gives us a bolus of affordable housing, and frankly, to make up for lost time, because we have not provided our citizens with affordable housing. We haven't. And the fact that people scurry for any rental apartment in this town is, it's unbelievable. We tried ADUs, didn't work. No one, no one does ADUs. So, I, I, I'm, I'm with Penrose. Penrose, I thought their, their application for Meeting House was really creative, the way they built the bridge and how they, they, they've screened the, the development from the road. I think we absolutely need to figure out the Gloria Hicks access issue. She needs a driveway, that's, it's probably already there. So, you know, that's where I'm at with this. We'll make, you know, we'd say an opportunity lost. I think it'll be an opportunity gained, and I think we'll have future opportunities that will provide homeownership ad nauseam here in this town. This is just the start. This is just the start. Those are my thoughts. I may have more. I really am interested in Jay's comments about the 40B. I'd like to hear more about how we might be able to affect the proposal. I'm looking for some more solar from Penrose, and parking, I think, is an issue, so I think we have some needs there that, that haven't been addressed. And, and perhaps height as well, but, you know, they're a for-profit company, they get advantaged financing, so they have certain rental units, they, you know, let's face the facts, they got to rent units. And I think we have the demand to fill those units, absent other comments. I'm not wringing my hands about my decision. I'm comfortable with my decision. I wasn't part of the initial evaluation committees. I had one evaluation meeting. I read through all the proposals very carefully. I took notes, I submitted those notes, and that's where I landed. So, I thank you very much.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted, I just want to go back to when I ran for Select Board, it was 2018, and I ran knowing, growing up as a person, housing insecure in the town of Chatham. And I've said this to some people, and they're shocked, but I moved 21 times by the time I was 17. And that's a lot. And being housing insecure really impacted how I feel about what we're trying to do in this town. Now, when we came on board, I was adamant and passionate about, let's try to get something done. And what we started to do, and community development was working on it, the town itself, the Select Board had been talking about it, is we were building an infrastructure to get to this point. And part of that was, you know, we had a housing production plan in 2021. We had Chatham 365 come on board and give us some needs-based assessments. We hired a housing specialist who came on staff and is probably one of the best on the Cape. We had ongoing RFPs for land, because that was our first step. And people stepped up in the town, and they said, you know, you know, they, they accepted the RFP, and we took those opportunities. Some of them were challenging and took years to get through. Others were a little more simple. Some of them went to town meeting. The Affordable, at Meeting House, was an act of the Affordable Housing Trust. We weren't moving fast enough, so it was proposed that we changed the Affordable Housing Trust, so it could move faster, it could be more efficient, it could bring experts on board that knew exactly, you know, in the areas where the Select Board themselves had no expertise. They had the passion to, for, for affordable and attainable housing, they didn't have the expertise. So, we had an Affordable Housing Trust. We held community forums, we held surveys, we had committee reviews. We had a lot of things that came before us to get to this point. And I, 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 one of our previous speakers said, "The people that will move here will have no reference to the Cape." People move here every day in Chatham that have no reference to the Cape, have no ties to the community, but they got money, and they move here. So, why is it different for people that will move here because they can afford to find a house or an apartment to rent? We need to be investing in our community on all levels of income. We are, the, the idea of doing these rental projects is, a lot of people struggle a lot finding houses. I have family members that work in community nonprofits that work on these kind of issues, and it's an everyday occurrence to try to find somebody housing from Provincetown to Plymouth and, and go through housing authorities looking for homes and having to end up sending that person to a shelter after they had lost their rental because it got turned into a short-term rental or it got turned into something else. That's happening every day, every town, all the time. And it is time that we look at what we're doing here in a bigger picture. And the bigger picture is, these two projects, we will put some rentals in this town, much-needed rentals that are affordable, should be able to afford something at 30% of your income. Most people that are renting on the Cape pay far more than that, and that impacts their food security, that impacts their quality of life, and this is a time where we can make a difference for our community and the Cape at large. We will do homeownership in Chatham. We're dedicated to that. We have things in the works that are, we're not ready to talk about, I guess, yet, but we're, we're, our eye is on it. This, this board, the Select Board, we all are intending to, to work together. And so, I am in support of the procurement announcement that our town manager, and I'm very proud of the process in which she went through. Thank you.
Anybody from the Affordable Housing Trust Board have anything to say? Carolyn?
Yes, thank you. I just want to echo a few of the statements that have already been made, and to Shereen's statement here. Everybody knows we need housing, we need all types of housing. I don't support the Penrose for Main Street, but that doesn't mean Penrose is bad. We can work out a lot of things. It's just that Hack is so good, and that this homeownership model, giving us this number of potential homes, is something we're not going to see again, that this is something that we should investigate and try to work out whether or not we could afford to do it. It should go to the public, they should be able to vote on it. This is such a beautiful opportunity, and then we'd have housing on one and rentals on the other. That's not excluding rentals. So, that's how I feel about the Hack project in general. I think I've, I've made those statements a lot. But specifically, I really think that, at this point, the, the decision not to get a financial consultant is a bad one, and that I made a request on June 12th for a financial consultant, and nothing's happened with that. It was over a month ago. Other communities have done it. I don't think any, even though we have some very smart people on this board who have a lot of expertise in finance, affordable housing is a different game, and there's a lot of nuances to it. It's a specialized field, and if we're going to do our due diligence, we should do our due diligence and make sure that we vet all these developers and make sure that they're delivering a, a value to us. And after we figure all that out, then we can make a decision. The decision not to have a financial consultant, I can't reconcile. I don't understand why that wouldn't have been done. It's, other communities have done it. It's something we should have, I, I don't understand why we would skip that step. So, that's unfortunate. But whatever we end up with, it will be housing, and we need to be happy about that. I've struggled for a long time to create housing. I wanted to be very, very happy in this moment. I know there's a lot of people out there who desperately need housing, but I really want to do it right, and I really want to bring a quality product to the town, and I think homeownership option is something that, at this level, this number of units, we're not going to have this opportunity again. We'll have one or two units here or there, which will be great, but we're not going to have the opportunity to make this many homeownership available. To a broader and higher AMI point, which is what the, the voters wanted when they voted for Buckley property, to use the free cash, they want, they, they were investing in having a higher AMI. And we are doing attainable, attainable is 80 and up, so they, the Penrose is offering that, but they're capping it at 110 AMI. So, this would be an opportunity to hit some of those higher AMI marks. But all housing is good, but I can't support the Penrose for Main Street. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to address some of the things that were brought up tonight by everyone. First, I think there's a misunderstanding on needs assessment. Every five years, the town does a needs assessment. That is still active and valid right now, and we use that as we were, we, we were all familiar with it, as we reviewed all of the RFPs. And it specifically addressed a large need for low-income rental housing. I don't think we were varying from the needs assessment. I think what's confusing is, in conjunction with doing this right now, we are also doing a new needs assessment, because the five-year one is about to run out. But that will be in place when, when its time comes. So, I, I, I'm sorry for anyone who thinks that we're not acting under a current needs assessment plan. Similarly, I think, well, we all up here, and I don't know if it was open to everyone else, had note, many, many, many notebooks of a lot of material that really went in-depth on every one of these proposals, and all of the proposals were excellent. But I can say that, to me, the Penrose plan proposals stood out as organized, as well-thought-out, as clearly done. Not only did they have great architectural renderings, they had clearly thought out site plans that addressed everything we had asked for as far as coverage, open space, drainage, snow, snow remove, I mean, everything. It, it was a well-done plan. It also included a management plan at the end, and a very good management plan, which the homeownership does not allow, and for me was very hard in that when I read, went to the end, I didn't find a management plan, and it was part of our criteria, actually, to, to rank things on. The last thing I, I definitely saw in those proposals, when you read all the way through, they are addressing solar, they are addressing sustainability, they were simply doing it differently than PoA. They didn't address it as forward, as, as PoA did, but it doesn't mean it's excluded. I feel like everyone's saying that it's just not in there, and that's not true. Same for a butter access. Written inside the Penrose proposal was a discussion of how they plan on addressing a butter access. We included it in our RFP, we looked at it in the proposals. I just think there's a lot that we, we keep hearing from everyone we didn't listen to, and I, for one, did, and it's what led me to the proposal that I'm going for, which is Penrose.
David?
I'd be very brief. I was on the Finance Committee in the 70s, and we talked about the need for affordable housing. We didn't realize how bad it was going to get. That's 45 years ago, 47 years ago. We've done almost nothing in 40s, in that period of time, other than Lake Street and a few things like that, and the, the, what do you call it, housing over on, of a step, Stony Hill Road, and, which has worked out all kind of way. Since then, as somebody said, in the last 10 years, we've done seven units, and, and that's pretty sad. We've talked about it. The good thing that's happened is the Select Board over the last couple of years has, has been aggressive and has acquired property for us to develop. We went through a very rigid process. We all learned a lot of things. Some of us have certain expertise, and all of us learned together about the things that we didn't know, and we learned from each other, and we learned from consultants. I'm not going to reiterate everything Leslie just said. I agree with her. I think people are not reading things appropriately. I think Penrose had a very complex and complete proposal. They are very reputable. I don't really know what went on in Orleans, and I'm not going to really worry about what went on in Orleans. As far as, as far as I'm concerned, the way they proposed things in our, through RFP and everything was done correctly, and I think we made the right decision, and I think we should proceed with this, and I'm going to be voting absolutely in favor of it. Thank you.
Chad?
Thank you. I'm fairly new full-time to Chatham, but I have been familiar with it for a number of years I came down here. My background is, involves a number of 40B projects as my work as a consultant and appraiser, and also have had a chance to deal with many developers over the years, and I found Penrose's proposal to be very thorough, very professional. They touched the bases. I am not going to claim to be the financial analyst, but I've looked at an awful lot of those statements over the years, and I found them to be on target. I think one thing that may have been missed is that the 40B process has built into it a limited dividend in terms of profitability for developers. So, they, there, this isn't a, a big profit, profitability project for them, but it does fit their style, it fits their capabilities, and it fits the professional approach, which I believe they've taken. And I think the main, major thing is that these, this Penrose proposal and what they've put forth, which I support, has a good deal of, it's going to be successful, and I think it can be a, a great start for the town, solving this affordable housing problem that we have all identified, and it will be a stepping stone, pardon the pun, a stepping stone to the future for implementation of ownership housing, which I think we all think is a great idea. That has some aspects to it, which are not as, as simple as many people think about, but I believe that Penrose is a professional proposal, it's a well-financed and well-capable, very capable professional group, and so I am in support of the Penrose proposals on both properties.
Bruce?
We definitely need...
We definitely need rental and ownership in this town. My own prejudice is that to build the type of community with some cohesion that we want, we probably need a larger number of ownership units than we do rental units. The exact proportion, we could all come up with a different number. But if both of these go to rental, there's nowhere way in the next 50 years that the majority of our affordable, attainable units will be ownership. And all of those proposals had merit. To me, the Hack one was a clear winner. I came out on the losing side. Thank you.
So I had a whole thing here, and I want to kind of revert, rework what I wanted to say. I'm, my friend, Mr. Levitt, has come to me on several occasions offline, and he did again tonight, saying we need to compromise. I couldn't agree more with you in principle. And, but this has been a process in which every one of the issues that people have brought up tonight has been hashed out. And I'm not saying you lost inside the committee. What I'm saying is, a process inside of a board or a committee has to listen to all of those concerns and all of those considerations and all of those arguments for this, that, or the other. And sometimes one wins and one loses, and sometimes you get a little bit, but not everything you want. Everything that has been discussed tonight was hashed out inside of the respective board processes over the, and by the way, the Select Board started this over a year ago. I mean, as the Affordable Housing Trust. And we had differences of opinion all along the way that got, somehow got resolved inside of that process. The fact that people now come here and say, well, you didn't listen to this, you didn't listen to that, you're doing this wrong, you've got it all, you should have done this, you should have done that. I appreciate that. We have been listening to that all along, okay? All along. Sometimes it came out in a way that you perhaps would have liked. I'll take Gloria Hicks as an example. Gloria Hicks is going to be just fine in this process. She, we have heard her. The fact that somebody didn't put in huge block letters in the middle of the proposal, we're going to take care of Gloria Hicks, doesn't mean that everybody has not heard the important consideration that the abutters have to be taken care of. Similarly, you know, the concerns that are being expressed about fitting this project into Main Street, that's in everybody's head here. And that as we go forward, I am absolutely confident that we will be on the case to make sure that those concerns are heard and responded to appropriately. One of the reasons, and we haven't really talked about it, but the drumbeat for Union Studio as a, as an architect, has been coming from all different sources for a long time. I mean, I've been trying to get them in here just to talk, and as has Mr. Levitt, just to consult, just to give us some views about how we might proceed with respect to housing. They will be an important component of getting us to where we want to be with respect to these projects. I'm absolutely confident. I know there are many of you in the audience who don't give a tinker's dam about what I'm confident about, but that is a fact. And believe me, I have no interest in this. Truthfully, you know, I could be spending my time doing a lot of other things. My only interest here, the only interest of everybody sitting on this day is to do what's best for Chatham. We've been hashing that out for, in my count, 19 months. And we came to a conclusion. It wasn't universal. It wasn't unanimous, but it was hard-won and hard-thought-out and hard-worked, and it is what it is. And I want, I want to say two additional things here, which is really what my most important response to this evening is. We will never get where we want to be as a town if we are banging away at each other in a personal way. Okay? Everybody up here has very, very carefully thought out and deep thoughts and deep commitment to their views, and that's fair. But the fact that I don't agree with Dean doesn't mean he's a bad guy, and it doesn't mean that I have any issue with him personally. And I would like to see us try to keep that notion in mind with respect to all of our comments, okay? And that brings to me the last point. Maybe it's the law, maybe it was the opinion of council, maybe it was, I don't know what it was. But, you know, Jill ended up with the short straw here. And she has done, in my opinion, a superb job. She was stressed from every different corner of the town. She has done a report. I urge you to read it if you haven't read it. It is thoughtful, it is balanced, it is intelligent, and she's made the best judgment that she can make. And I think she is entitled to be treated as if that is the case. And anything else is, in my judgment, off limits and out of bounds. No matter how disappointed anybody is with the decision that has been made, either by Jill or by the people up at this table, I really don't think that entitles you to toss brickbets in anybody's direction. So with that, I'll just say, I won't repeat what I've heard from my colleagues around the table. I'll simply say that with respect to the financial consultant point, there is a tremendous amount of financial expertise and experience and just plain, ordinary savvy around this table. Okay? And you may not believe it, it's true. Okay? And my experience is that more times than not, when you hire a consultant, you end up with somebody who doesn't know as much as the people that hired them, number one, and number two, they give you the opinion that the person that hired them wants them to give you. What we got around this table was honest, neutral, independent judgments with respect to the financing that supports the Penrose, supports all the proposals. I'm not going to get into the details, but I think there's really no need, other than to delay and to put off a decision to hire a financial consultant. And I would also point out that, you know, there's a lot of chatter about that now. First time we ever heard that suggestion was from Ms. Gibbs on June 11th. Nobody around this table suggested that throughout the entire process. So I'm, I am, I think Penrose is a good partner. I think Union Studio will be a good architectural partner. And I hope we can get together as a town and move to the next stage, taking into account the concerns that people have, taking into account, as best we can, what it takes to come to a consensus around a project that we all know we desperately need. So that's where I'm in it. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate time to make a motion?
No. Can we still speak? Can we still speak, sir?
No, we're, I think-
I just have something very short.
All right, please. And then I'll take a motion.
Thank you very much. My name is Judy Patterson. I live in West Chatham. I think you guys have all done a really good job, you know, trying to work through this. And I have watched these meetings until I'm sick. I have watched a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee be extremely disrespectful to other members. There was no need for that. I think that this has gone on longer, you know, no one, no one here, and Shereen, to what you had said, no one is disputing the fact that we need affordable housing, not one person in this room, because if there are, they shouldn't be here. We all agree on that. I think the problems that the majority of us are looking at right now are the facts that, Mr. Oppenheim, you said you didn't know about Orleans. How could you not know about it when it was all over the papers? These people did not follow the rules. And yet here you are, the majority of you, pushing for a company that the general public here does not want. And once again, to go back to your favorite subject, town meeting, you guys aren't listening to the people. We elected you to represent us. We appreciate the work that you all have put into this. But for you to stand up tonight, with the exception of Dean and Cory and Carolyn and Mr. Bean, and totally ignore what these people have said to you, is an injustice to those that have elected you. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion. For the, this is for the Affordable Housing Trust.
For the Affordable Housing Trust, I move that we affirm the findings-
The award of-
The award of the both, the Main Street property-
Do you want me to help you?
Go ahead. Read it, John. Read it, please.
So the motion would be that the Joint Board and Trust vote to affirm the town manager's recommendation to award to Penrose for 1533 and zero Main Street and zero Meaning House Road properties, having met all specifications of the RFP. And in my report, I noted, and consistent with the evaluation committee's recommendations.
And the only modification I'll make is that is just for the Affordable Housing Trust Board, and then we'll do it again for the Select Board.
Sure, if you want to vote.
Yep, we do. We do.
Well, thank you for your recommendation. So moved.
I will second that.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, I'll take the role of the Affordable Housing Trust Board, and I'll start with you, Mr. Bean.
I do not support them.
So the answer is no?
No.
I do support.
Mr. Oppenheim?
I support.
Ms. Schneberger?
I support it.
Ms. McClellan?
I do not support.
Ms. Davis?
I support.
And Mr. Shell says aye, yes. The, so that's five to two. And then if everybody can remember it, can we have a motion on the Select Board's side?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to affirm the procurement officer's recommendation to award project development rights to Penrose for both properties, subject to compliance with the requirements of the RFP and negotiation and execution of a purchase and sale agreement and land a real property disposition agreement.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Do not support.
Mr. Dykens?
Support.
Mr. Nacastro?
No.
Ms. Davis?
I support.
And Mr. Shell says, yes, I support. Thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn from the Affordable Housing Trust.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, Mr. Bean?
I support.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Oppenheim?
Ms. Schneberger?
Yes.
Ms. McClellan?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye, and we'll have just a five-minute intermission before we continue the Select Board meeting. We're going to reconvene the Select Board meeting alone. And we'll start with the, well, let me, let me go through. I did not review the agenda, so let me do that briefly. We have two remaining sets of minutes. We have public announcements and agenda requests. We have two public hearings, one to consider amendment to the Town of Chatham local alcoholic beverages licensing regulations, Section 6. I think that's a continuation of an existing public hearing, if I'm not mistaken. We have a new public hearing to consider an application for a new annual wine and malt beverages-only restaurant license at Pan D'Avignon. And then we are moving to a report from the Director of Public Works on water supply. We have a committee, board, and commission update from the Bike Ways Committee. We then will have public comment on the business agenda and the business- We then will have public comment on the business agenda, and the business agenda will be, number one, a one-day entertainment license, et cetera, for the 400 main block party. Number two, a second reading of the disposing of deceased marine mammals on Chatham Beach's policy. Number three, considering a letter of support for paint stewardship legislation. Number four, a recommendation of the Waterways Advisory Committee on Town Landing Regulations. Number five, Gulf of Maine offshore wind project presentation and consideration of a letter of comment. And finally, appointments and reappointments. I don't know if Ms. Mueller is present. Oh, you are, okay, good. So I don't have to move that to accommodate you. You're welcome. So I will take comments, if any, or a motion on the minutes of June 18.
Moved, so moved.
Second.
Any comments? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, page 11, just the middle of the page, there's a paragraph, there was also concern about the tide gate at Morris Island Road. The end of that paragraph, the DPW says it's better than it was prior to, and I think we need something there. Prior to now, to last year?
That was one of Mr. Shell's comments as well, and I've amended it to read prior to the installation of the gate. I don't have it up in front of me, but I have amended that to match what was said.
Thank you. That's it?
Okay. Dean, go ahead.
Just on page 12, under the appointments, the Shellfish Advisory Committee, the motion, isn't, it says that there's second or last word before the end, until sooner, isn't, isn't the language usually unless sooner revoked or successor appointed? Can we just check that? Thank you. That's it.
Wow. That's, that's, that's a real catch, yeah.
Close reading. Close reading, thank you.
Anything? All right, I got just a couple, I think. On page five, and this is probably one for the DPW director, but at the top paragraph, it says the five-year pumping comparison was presented. We are on par with the average from 2020-22. Something tells me that 2000 maybe is 2020?
I went back and rewatched, and you're correct.
Okay, thank you. You got that, did you? Paid, all right, you're prior to, I got that. On page 10, I made a slight revision here, and the paragraph under J, 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth paragraph down, second line, I was gonna strike content of the bond. That was not my question. My question was, and I would insert this language, the representations made in the certifications and opinion, I'm sorry, in the closing certifications and opinions. And I think that's it. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. The minutes of June 22.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You probably already got these.
Go ahead.
But it says, Mr. Matters moved to appoint, and then it says, we have roll call of present, present, we need to say aye, 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 aye. And then the same thing for the motion to adjourn.
These are on page two and three.
Pages two.
Yep, yep, yep. That's all I had. Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Okay. Next up, we have public announcements and agenda requests. Mr. Davis, does he have a?
I have one.
Oh, you have it? I'm sorry, I have.
Mine.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Davis isn't here, he's.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Make that later.
Go ahead.
But I do have a couple of things. First off, I just wanna say, this Fourth of July, with the weather and everything, was on steroids in this town, and I really appreciate all the people working for the town that did such a good job, and the businesses that served everybody in town. I had to go down Friday to get my haircut, don't ask me why it was scheduled then, but Shore Road was gridlocked, Stage Harbor was gridlocked, Main Street was gridlocked. I mean, it was just, there was no, there was no local in-and-outs anywhere to get through the town. So I hope everybody fared well and did, you know, got, made some money. On that note, though, I think that the town is looking at that North Beach party that happened on Fourth of July. It just, I heard there was over almost 200 boats out there, and it was just an inappropriate gathering. We all wanna have a good time, but I think that that was more of a public business adventure. And saying that, you know, it was kinda cool to hear the rumors of us people in town performing for birthday parties and whatnot. But one of the things I'd really like us to start to look at, and I think I've said it before, is, you know, our landings in the summer are really busy, and the resources aren't as big as, you know, you know, they're not large. And so, we have a couple of commercial abutters who have, you know, will have an event, particularly down at Stage Harbor, next to Claflin Landing, where it impedes the public access to, to, to the beaches, to the beach. And in the case of Stage Harbor, that parking lot's really small, and, you know, the yacht club's next door, it'll hold a regatta, you know, like the day before Fourth of July or two days before the Fourth of July, and nobody can park anywhere. So I'm wondering if we can create a conversation, and maybe we're already doing it, and some sort of good neighbor policy, where we are having a better understanding about what's happening about in our landings, and then, you know, what we have as plans to make sure that we assure that there's access for everybody. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'd like to double down on that.
Okay.
Be assigned, along with Shereen. I also, going along with my agenda request of a couple of weeks ago, to revisit the sidewalk plan, in the same vein, on the Fourth of July, I walked up Shore Road, and on the east, excuse me, on the west side of Shore Road, there's really ample space for a really nice sidewalk. So I hope our sidewalk plan takes a look at Shore Road, and it's much needed, and there's enough space on the, on the west side of it, walk the whole way. Desperately needed, thanks.
Cory?
Mr. Chair, thank you. In reference to the North Beach, I also received the emails, the photos, the comments and everything. I do know there's an internal meeting that's happening shortly. I would appreciate that that conversation get brought back to the select board, if we need to discuss a policy issue, budget issues, whatever, but this is not just an isolated incident, this was, this is some history there, so follow-up on our behalf, I think would be appropriate. And then, as Shereen said, this weekend was bonkers. And kudos to all our staff, but I do have to say, special thank you to the Summer Patrol. They worked their tails off, they're visible, they're active, they're engaged, and they had to deal with a couple of things over the weekend that were probably above and beyond the call of duty, I saw firsthand. So I thank them for their efforts, I think they're a great resource, and I hope that we keep that in the budget for years, for years future, so I really appreciate their presence.
If I might also, the town of Dennis took draconian measures this year and shut their beaches down, Mayflower Beach, and they shut them down to the partying, so. So I think we did get, experienced some spillover in Chatham. I talked to the chief, and I think that there were some partying going on here that perhaps was spillover from Dennis, but they just gave up, they couldn't deal with it anymore. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else from the public online? No? Okay. Oh.
Can I just ask you a quick question as a public citizen? Is there an update on the Eldridge lot, and when that might be open, as we're talking about how busy town was this week? Because that was obviously a sticking point.
Jill, go ahead.
Okay.
I have some exciting news. So it should be open this week. So the Chatham Valet is our partner, is all set up to operate, and I think that they were just possibly waiting for the CO for the restroom visitor center. So yes, very exciting, it will definitely be this week.
Okay, good. Yeah, actually, thank you for that. I've been asking myself that several times over the course of the last couple of weeks, so. Okay. Next up is, I think, the licensing regulations, is it continuing public meeting, public hearing, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you can bring us up to date.
Sure, this is, the hearing's continued from the June 19th, original public hearing. This is an amendment to the local alcoholic beverages licensing regulations, specific to the application procedure for amendments to existing licenses. And it basically just codifies the past practice that was required under state law, which is no longer required under state law, for advertisement, public hearing, and notice to abutters. The original language that was presented to the board, you did have some, some edits to it. I've provided you with the updated language, and if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody? I just had one, Shauna. If you look up at the third bullet, it says alteration of premises slash change of location, and I wonder if in the first line of the new material, we might wanna duplicate that so that this, these notice requirements apply to alteration of premises slash change of location.
That's fine.
Okay. Anything? Anybody else? I'll take a motion.
Just gonna put that as a head.
No, 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 no. Okay, I'll take a motion.
Are we voting on this tonight?
Can we?
I move, I move we approve the regulation as revised, as proposed.
Second.
Okay, and for the discussion, all those in favor, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shauna. Could you read the, the notice of here, public notice hearing? Public hearing notice, sorry.
Sure. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice, notice is here, but given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 9, 2024, at 5:30 PM, in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261, George Ryder Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform, to consider a request for a new annual wine and malt beverage-only restaurant license for CCNY LLC, doing business as Pandemonium Cafe and Boulangerie, 71 Crow Road, Mario Mariani, manager, all interested parties encouraged to participate, signed, the Select Board.
Mr. Mariani and Mr. Riley?
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Pandemonium.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Mariani is COO, and the Pandemonium, as we all know, is famous for the quality of their baking and food preparation. I think we're all thrilled that they've come to Chatham and are reinvigorating a spot on Crow Road. They would like a beer and wine license, because they're gonna be preparing full meals, lunch and dinner. And, you know, the idea that, to be profitable, they believe they need a beer and wine license so that people can have a glass of wine, or a glass of beer with their dinners, evening and lunch. There are, although the application says 16 seats, there are actually 18 seats on the site, they have sufficient parking for the number of seats. They have been using a valet to assist sort of the coffee and muffin crowd when they crowd in early in the morning. And so they believe that it's really appropriate in this location. Shauna forwarded me correspondence from our neighbor, which was greatly appreciated. And the concerns, I think, that were in that correspondence were misplaced. I mean, this is, you know, his correspondence references a residential neighborhood, and it's GB3, and has been GB3 for about 45 years or so, maybe longer. And the, and there's been a business in this location for that long, excuse me, for that long or longer. We all miss the Chatham Bakery, but, but the, in our society today, it's tough to make a living, and it's tough to run a business that makes, earns a profit. And one of the things that Mario thinks is very important, in terms of the possibility of having a successful business at this location, to be profitable would be this legal license. I think we all know Pandemonium by their reputation, and I believe they'll be a good corporate citizen here in Chatham. Mr. Mariani's here, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bill, or Mr. Mariani, if I have the name right. On the description of the premises, there's a question as to whether outdoor areas are to be included. What, what practice or policy will you have to limit or restrict drinking outside? Because we know historically, and I assume currently, since you've opened, people are dining outside.
Well, I had a conversation with Shauna this afternoon. She said that the outdoor, use of the outdoor patio as licensed premises was not advertised and can't be considered, so that'll be for a future meeting.
You would anticipate coming back to request that?
Yes, we do. One of the things that, you know, we're gonna be working on, to get ready for that, is gonna be working out parking details with adjoining properties, to make sure we have sufficient parking. The company is working with Chatham Valet also, to provide valet services, to make sure that they have sufficient parking, and that the driveway and the parking area at the building itself are not clogged up in inconveniencing the neighbors.
I haven't had the opportunity to visit since you opened, but putting aside, for the sake of discussion, the outdoor usage, what, how do you anticipate serving beer or wine inside? Is it for, only for people that are seated, either at a counter or at tables and dining, or?
Yes. Hello, everybody. If, just beg my pardon for just one second. I sat for two hours to listen to the discourse tonight, so I think you owe me 10 seconds to tell you what an inspiring group of people you are, to have that kind of discourse, to work together and do a great job for the town of Chatham. It was very impressive, and I know it's not easy when people hold a particular position or are passionate about something. So for the two hours I watched, I was engaged, and I wanna congratulate you for doing a great job with that. We entered into this process because we found a place that we felt that property, at 71 Crow Road, had a history of success. It was, it felt really right for us. It was quaint, it was off the beaten path, and we wanted to start simply, first of all, to show some income with the expenditures that we've had over the past years. We've also opened a pizzeria recently, so our capital investment has been really strong. So we wanted to let folks know in town that it's the real deal, that we are who we said we are. So we wanted to open softly, if you would, with what we do best, croissants, pastries. We roast our own coffee now, and the coffee's off the charts, the young man who works for us who's doing a great job. And then, we would have proceeded with that, just to show that we are doing things slowly. We're not a 50-seat restaurant that's asking for 100, we're an 18-seat restaurant and a small bar that serves beer and wine, which will be all contained until the time we come and request it, will be contained inside. You can. request it, will be contained inside, you can have my personal word and experience in the restaurant business for forty-five years, I've never had any difficulty, my track record in Hyannis is stellar, and, um, we'll just be adults, serving adults, in a classy manner, in the same way that we do our foods and we bake, bake products. Uh, Mr. Norcross and Mr. Riley have been, uh, welcomed us to the neighborhood, they're right up the block, and we feel they're good representation, and they wouldn't take on a project that they thought was going to be, um, somehow, uh, not conducive to the neighborhood, and.
That's wrong, Mario, we are lawyers.
Well, I, I know everybody needs a paycheck, but, uh, mine's not going to be that high, I, I think, so, um, it, it's just a, a matter of business, we serve, um, high-end Mediterranean, uh, fresh cuisine of the highest quality, and, uh, that deserves to be paired with a great glass of beer, a glass of wine, uh, it's not a full liquor license, it's beer and wine, we understand that, and we just want to be on a playing field that we know that, um, at some point in time, we'll be able to turn a profit and, uh, provide the community with the best of what we do.
Would, do you anticipate that anyone would be, uh, drinking while just standing around in, inside the restaurant, or do they have to be seated, how is that?
Well, uh, it, with, with the menu that we're going to have, which is extremely similar to what we serve at Hyannis, but on a smaller scale for lunch and dinner and brunch, which is our most popular, we, we, um, we were awarded best brunch on Cape Cod, among some, uh, wonderful restaurants and, and, and resorts, uh, recently, and it's a very popular meal, um, so I don't anticipate, uh, it, it's a small place, I wouldn't want somebody standing by me with a drink in the hand, so, man, have a seat and enjoy yourself and, uh, and eat up and drink up and pay your tab and, and, and move on for the next person.
And finally, does your, um, restaurant in Hyannis have a beer and wine license?
We have a full liquor license.
Full liquor license.
But we started with a beer and wine license, again, we started very slowly and expanded appropriately, and then we were awarded the full liquor license, um, about twelve, twelve, thirteen years ago.
I, I have a question for Shauna, um, up the street is Branches, they have a full alcohol license?
Yes, they do.
Yeah. Uh, and is, and I know Mr. Riley represented, uh, that license, I don't recall any neighborhood opposition for that, was there?
No, I don't recall any, any input on, uh, negative.
I know it's a little different area, I mean, the term, it's, uh, right off the bike trail and all of that, but, um, have we had any complaints, I haven't heard any come before the Select Board?
No.
On that one, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, um, question about the valet service that you're proposing, um, to accommodate, I'm assuming, overflow parking, so it's not impacting the neighbors.
Um, you, you mentioned, uh, Fourth of July and the amount of impact, we were open, and we were so glad that we were able to open, um, and just to enjoy some of the summer business, uh, but every day has been like that, except today was a little off, maybe it was the humidity level, I don't know, uh, it's never good for bread, so I don't like humidity, that's, uh, humidity is bread's best friend when it's being, uh, made, and its worst enemy afterwards, so, um, today was a little bit off, but every day has been that way, and I did not want, uh, I wanted to start off on the right note, that someone's home watching, uh, making sure that it's organized, uh, making sure that our neighbor, um, and some folks who live around the corner, um, aren't inconvenienced in any way and feel encroached upon any more than the business has been there in the past, so we've had a valet every day. The reference to Chatham Valet is, I met with, um, one of the managers, who's actually a friend of mine, and, um, I asked for a quote, um, what it would be for seven days from, uh, nine in the morning until nine at night.
Okay, so that was, I, I guess I'm referring to the service versus the, the company that you're inviting, so you're going to do nine to nine, and?
Uh, seven A M., we open now till five P M.,
Okay.
But we are going to request that we're open till nine.
And you will have valet service?
Correct.
The entire day, seven days a week?
Correct.
And how long do you anticipate that, you know, for the, for the summer or just into the fall?
Uh, the question about, um, uh, year-round businesses, um, we, we've traditionally been one for thirty-three years, we're twenty-four-seven in the bakery, so that's, that's our nature when we opened Pandavignon Restaurant Boulangerie, and now our pizzeria, um, which is on-premise, uh, as well, we, um, we're open year-round, um, I got a call from a neighbor, lovely name, and her name was Ross, Mrs. Ross, she lived across the street, she was concerned what we were going to do for the other, um, seven months of the year when they, we didn't have the summer business, and I said, "We've dealt with that in Hyannis, at an airport, in an industrial park, people say it's hard to find us, we've made a way to be profitable and to keep a lot of people in business, and we're going to be open year-round, and we're going to do the best way we can all year-round, and whatever it takes," um, in Hyannis recently, um, we had to be very creative, um, thank goodness, I created a good relationship with the airport manager, my friend Katie Servick, and, uh, we've recently required a lease for twelve air, prime airport parking spots right at the edge of, of Airport Road, uh, to accommodate the new pizzeria, so.
So, Mr. Mariano, I just want to slow you down here, I, um, I'm talking about Chatham, and, um, my concern is the parking at, at the, I can always call it Chatham Bakery, Corey, um, at, at, at your business, and that, that the abutters who are expressing concern about the impact on their residency due to parking is being addressed appropriately.
Um, in, in, in my being verbose, I was trying to give you a sense that I will be creative and intent on taking care of the parking year-round and making sure, and I wanted to say that I start, we've started off that way, because usually when something starts off well, it ends well, and it's not like I'm, I'm guessing or I'll plan for the future, whatever it takes.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael, um, just a quick question, uh, valet service on weekends as well, um, and when there's a funeral, there's going to be, it's going to be tight parking there, so you, that's very, very important to, to what we think, what I think.
You're right, um, we've been very fortunate because the Nickerson, um, home is, uh, being renovated, uh, it's a lengthy, expensive process, uh, Mr. Luciano told me, uh, the manager, I, I believe that's what his, his title is, and, hey, Chris, good to finally see you in person, talked a couple of times, um, uh, and, uh, we've been very fortunate, and I guess, uh, we've been very fortunate because there hasn't been, um, a, a service, as far as I know, concerned, and that's coming, but, um, that's, that's a friendly neighbor being very generous to us, I want to go beyond that and ensure that it's not going to be that kind of, uh, manby-pamby situation, I want to have some definite, uh, place that we can bring cars, it's safe and, um, um, and run, run a tight chip.
So, so I guess my follow-up question is, when there is a, is a funeral and there's a demand for parking there, where are you going to valet folks to, uh, you have, what, what?
Well, there, no, there.
How are you going to handle the parking then, that's my question.
Well, there are several options, one is the, uh, Roy Missouri's old office is currently vacant, and we're using some spots at that location, we've got the, uh, middle school parking lot up the street, uh, you know, there's the Drama Guild, so there are options which we're all exploring, for the time being, we have sufficient parking on the site for the number of seats we have, you know, the overflow we're talking about is really the coffee and pastry crowd in the morning, which is, you know, very transient, as you know.
Okay, thanks, I'm good.
And, and not related to the liquor license either, so.
Um, I, I've only been there a couple of times when it was the Chatham Bake Shop, great business, but, um, Rebecca and Corey came to our ribbon cutting, and I remember her talking about how busy her folks' place was and what it meant to Chatham, and the line out the door, and then I thought, well, those people had to be parking somewhere.
Yeah, they were parking on the same place.
That's why we, we didn't want to change things upfront, we wanted to kind of be welcomed, show you what we do, little by little, we'll be, uh, asking, uh, along the way, and hopefully continue to be appropriate and, uh, make the right requests and, and do it in the right way.
Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I mean, first of all, my family, my in-laws, my wife, you know, we used to own the Chatham Bakery, uh, many years, um, the original owners, it's been passed on from, you know, owner to owner over the years, um, I think you are a great good fit for this location, I am familiar with your family, your management team, um, and I think that you're approaching this in the right way, uh, I will stress that, um, it, the parking that you are required to have, you have an ample spaces along the perimeter, we, we know that, there's not, there's plenty of spaces there right now, um, the demand that you're going to hopefully get, that has been expressed over the years, other, you know, with our business and, you know, is, um, going to demand more spaces, I just encourage you to work with the neighbors, we had, we had a really good relationship with the funeral home, um, it's, you know, it's doable, but you got to work, make arrangements, you got to be flexible, uh, and I think with other properties that you're exploring, uh, you might have a, a, a good plan in place, so I would explore your options, uh, be sensitive to the neighborhood, but I'm excited for you guys to, to kind of grow in this location and, um, be a staple for, for years to come, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
If I could have just one more minute, I just wanted to say that, um, uh, I had an experience, um, at a beachy restaurant in Yarmouth Port, uh, which was arguably, from what I hear, and I've been in the restaurant business for a very long time, was one of the best restaurants ever on Cape Cod, it closed, and there were five iterations that tried to recreate what Marietta Bonmateria had done, and it's so hard, and I wish that we had come in and we could have been what your, uh, folks were, um, and we're going to do it in our way, we'll do it respectfully, and hopefully it'll work out as much as it did for them, um, you know, you have to go through some, uh, trial and error, uh, but we, uh, we respect, um, history and respect, um, successful businesses, and you have to learn from them.
Dean?
Just had one, uh, other question, what, and maybe this goes to Shauna as well, what hours would you, uh, are you requesting that you be able to serve beer and wine?
Um, lunch will start at eleven, eleven to nine.
Eleven to nine, and, and Shauna, we can limit that license that way if we wanted to?
Yes, absolutely, um, you can limit the license hours anytime you want, and that was going to be one of my questions, if you're requesting full license hours, which are available in town, eight A M. to one A M., um, starting at noon on Sundays unless the Board grants permission to start at ten on Sundays, so.
Our, our license now in Hyannis allows us to serve at ten on Sunday because our brunch starts an hour earlier, it's ten, ten to four.
But you're looking eleven to nine every day, is that what you're saying?
Well, um, I, I, brunch was a, uh, a conversation we had recently, so it's not, wasn't fresh on my mind, but yes, we'd love to be able to serve, uh, when, when we start serving food, lunch is at eleven, brunch is on, at ten on Sundays, so we would request ten on Sundays.
So, the request is eleven to nine, um, six days a week, and Sunday it would be ten to nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just two quick questions, one, um, I think the, uh, one, one of the commenter's letter said seven to nine parking spaces, I'm curious to know if you know what the definitive number is, and my second question is, um, you've indicated that you personally will be in the, uh, business forty hours a week, and I'd just like to, uh, confirm that if you will.
Myself, or, or, or our, our general manager, Chloe Adas, um, who I believe, um, was, uh, well, she was there at the ribbon cutting, um, and, and the, uh, me right now, um, I'm, I've not, I've been accustomed to working a hundred hours a week, um, at Pandavignon when it first opened, uh, because I'm also the manager of the bakery, so I had two positions. I, my, my commitment is to either be there or have my surrogate, a ma, a, a bona fide professional manager operate the business.
So.
She does that now for me in Hyannis, and I don't see why she wouldn't, uh, continue to be, uh, operating that.
I'll, I'll defer my question for Shauna to get the second one, the number of parking spaces.
There are, there are ten line spots in that, and from, from the street to the dumpsters, there are ten spots.
Okay, is that, uh, is, is that, can we confirm?
And one, and one.
Ten, ten spaces, and?
Including one handicap.
Shauna, do we need to do anything with the application to, to accommodate this surrogate point?
So, I, I would point out that the A B C C does take these applications, um, as written, it is stated on here that you'll be on premises or intends to be on premise forty hours a week, and it is signed and dated, so, um, if that is not what's going to occur, the A B C C could, um, take issue with that.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it with, with you to deal with that, I just wanted to be.
I will, my, um, uh, I, uh, I've operated that, that, uh, full bar, when we opened it for seventeen years, and I said about thirteen years ago is when we applied for the, and I haven't had a, uh, s- single issue, um, uh, management is so important these days, and so hard to find like a skilled cook, um, who knows, uh, what the end result is supposed to really be like, and, um, uh, uh, right now Chloe and I have been there every day, so pretty much, uh, more than forty hours, sometimes I go home, even though we close at five, I'll be there at eight, eight-thirty, planning, thinking, moving things around.
Okay, um, comments from the, from the public, uh, yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Anne Hessian, I live on Collins Lane, it's the little cul-de-sac right behind the restaurant, um, and it is a neighborhood there, um, there are five houses there, and there are families there, uh, it is clearly a neighborhood, um, I love the bakery, the food is fantastic, the breads are delicious, and I have been to Hyannis for dinner a number of times, it's fabulous, but it's a completely different place, it's in an industrial area, and it is the airport. The other issue that I have is there has been a valet person there in a booth who is directing the people where to park, and the people have been parking in a line of doubles, so it's the ten cars and cars placed behind them too, so I have concerns, not about the hours of the bakery, but about the alcohol, um, uh, and just, uh, the noise, uh, with families that are right in, in that area, um, I don't think there is enough room to accommodate the parking, um, and I am just not in favor of it, um, I also feel when they bought the, when they went in there and leased it or what, they knew what it was, they knew exactly what was available, that it didn't have a liquor license, and when they were making their biz, business management decisions, they knew that, and now they're saying they, to turn a profit, they have to have that, um, but I believe they made the decision already as to what it was, it was a bakery years ago, and it was a sandwich thing, I have no issue about it staying open till nine or anything, but I'm really opposed, um, to the liquor license, I have big concerns about the parking, um, the valet person just directs people, they do not take cars and move them anywhere.
Thank you. Barry?
Barry, just a little, uh, North Chatham, um, I think, first, first of all, I sat through it as well, thank, thank you, thank you, Jill, Kathy, thank you. One of the things that, that's really has struck me in Chatham lately is how we now have neighborhood places, you know, you look at South Chatham, there's Pisces and across the street, uh, used to be the target of Pig, um, Max, we have, in North Chatham now, we have Elm Woods and, and Sunrise, uh, breakfast place that has, that has, um, alcohol, and, and somebody mentioned, um, down the street from these guys, Branches, we have all these little neighborhood places, and it's wonderful, we have all these new choices, and, you know, a French, French restaurant. I just think it, it needs to have wine, and, and, and I want to speak in favor of it, um, these little neighborhood places are really helping to get, get a lot of that traffic out of downtown, uh, for restaurants, and, and I think everybody loves it, and, and I hope you look favor, favorably on it, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, hi, good evening, Brian Tobin, I represent, uh, Mr. Glenn P. Doherty, who
Hi, good evening. Brian Tobin, I represent Mr. Glenn P. Doherty, who is a director of butter of the applicant's property. I believe letters that were submitted, both by my client as well as myself, have been referenced by the select board here. I would like to just touch more thoroughly on some of those points, as well as do my best to adjust to the applicant's comments. Again, we are very much in support of a business being here. Our concern is purely with the liquor license. So I would just like to walk, if I could have a little extra time, I'm not sure if you all have time limits, but if I could just have a little...
Don't, don't take half the evening, but make, make your speech.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
So if you could speak up a little bit, please, I can't hear.
For sure. I'm not sure if this is the, the location of the mic, or is that better?
That's much better.
Wonderful. All right. Still in the, still in the sweet spot? Very good. Okay. So, oh, and by the way, I must say, I want to join everybody's comments on the exceptional character discipline and intellect of the select board and town officials here, and obviously as well as that's evinced by the applicant. And I also have to say, it's very difficult to argue the point about a French restaurant serving wine, but I will nevertheless do my best. So the first point I would just like to raise as a data point for this board is that this is the last presently available liquor license that the town of Chatham may issue. Okay? And that's because MGL Chapter 138 stipulates a quota for liquor license in both the, if you'll look at the attachments in our letters, both the town records and the state records indicate that it's the last license for, for now. Granted, licenses do evolve and they open up over the years, but Chatham between 2015 and 2018 went through a three-year period where no new liquor licenses opened up. So it is scarce. Second, I did want to comment that the immediate neighborhood in this region, and somebody did touch on this point earlier, is residential in nature. Okay? So to the north, you do have Collins Lane, which consists of six, single families. To the south, you have residences as well as, I believe, a now empty architectural design office. To the southwest, you have a 24-unit development. To the east, you have residences across Crow Road. So the immediate neighborhood is residential in character, notwithstanding the applicant's comments about the particular zoning. And as one point, that GB3 doesn't but a residential neighborhood. In fact, there's even a split zone lot there that I believe is directly on Collins Lane. Oh, the second point I just did want to reiterate to the point, to this board, is that there is an abundance of liquor licenses in the immediate facility. So I think it's 75% of the wine and malt liquor licenses that are, the town, that are active in the town of Falmouth are in a mile radius or less of this subject property. And 25% of those are in a half-mile radius or less. So even though, and this is with respects to the general area, I just want to make that distinction, not the immediate neighborhood. Likewise, 85% of liquor licenses for either category, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I do want to read you and be respectful of everybody's time. Am I taking up too much time? Is that, okay. All right, very good. 85% of the restaurants that have any type of license, whether it's all liquor or, or wine and beer, are likewise within a mile or less. And 25% of those are likewise within a half-mile or less. Additionally, there's just countless other factors that relate to the location, the size, the traffic, the noise. I mean, what we're dealing with is a quarter acre lot, a approximately 2,000 square foot structure on that quarter acre lot, an ample amount of outdoor seating, which, you know, whether it's, patrons don't, don't know whether or not there's a license for outdoor, you know, beverage consumption or not. So there is an ample amount of outdoor seating available. And it's, it's a corner lot. So there's the potential, a potential public safety concern for spillover with pedestrians into one of two roads. And likewise, with just the seven parking spaces abutting the northerly neighbor, which is that way, is that Collins Lane that we referred to, there's potential traffic problems. And, you know, I know they have a valet there. I'd like to get more information on that because my understanding, and what I've heard from my client and others, is that they mostly have just been directing traffic away, as opposed to actual parking And then just lastly, the present seating is, or excuse me, the present parking is, is not sufficient for the present seating. So we had a count in the first week of July that there were some, somewhere in the neighborhood of 60-odd seats, and there were north of 20 seats inside the facility. In fact, I believe it was a 26-seat count inside the facility. So that, that's unfortunately just not 18 seats. And the common Vittler license is based on the food establishment, the Board of Health's food permit, which only allows zero to 25 seats. There's a cap there. Their current application, they're adjusting at this hearing from 16 to 18 seats. There's still a discrepancy there. And lastly, this is just in violation of the, the Chatham zoning bylaw, which breaks down the math for how many seats you can have per parking space. And they have seven parking spaces. So if you do the math there, in the, in the town of Chatham bylaw, you're allowed four seats for every, effectively four seats for every parking space. Plus, you also need one parking space for every two employees on their largest shift. All right? So what that effectively translates to, if you have seven spaces, there are 24 seats allowed if you assume two employees on the longest shift. Well, again, we counted 26. They're saying 18, but we counted 26. And to that effect, as well, the zoning bylaw does require site plan review to be conducted. And one of the things that you look at for site plan review is how many parking spaces are available. And that has to be conducted every time you expand the use and/or change of use. And it's certainly the position of my client that this, it constitutes both an expansion and an enlargement of use. The last time a site plan review was done on this particular property was in 2003. That's how we can say that there are definitively seven lawful parking spaces, because that's the last that was approved by the planning board. There is a loading area, and there is also a reserved area for the entrance walkway, and that may be where these kind of extra spaces are coming from, but they weren't officially approved by the planning board. So again, I just want to reiterate, it is the position of my client that the only way to resolve these issues definitively for the time being is an outright denial of the liquor license. Again, this is not being in opposition to the business running, true to kind of more of its historical char, character with slight adjustments and evolution and enlargement. But in the event that this board were to vote to support and/or approve their application, we would ask that it would attach certain reasonable conditions. And I'll just quickly list those, and then I'll give time for other folks to comment. The first is a limitation of service hours. In our letter, we request 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We're certainly comfortable with any hours that both the applicant and the town are comfortable with regarding the, what was discussed earlier. Second, we would request that there would be a service bar only as a condition, that they wouldn't have an actual bar where people sit down and drink like they're sitting at a bar, so that there would be a service bar that would seat people in their seats and for indoor seating only, and that you would have to be seated at a table to drink. Thirdly, and again, these are all in the letter, starting on, on the letter that I drafted, starting on page three. We would request, and it seems like the applicant, at least for the time being, is amenable to the idea, service and consumption of alcohol indoors only. Fourth, we would ask that seating would definitively be reduced and limited in order to comply with Chatham's parking requirements based on seating and number of employees during the larger shift or with the contents of the submitted application as amended. And then fifthly, we'd like some sort of verification mechanism, be it biannual submission of the larger shifts to the select board and/or building commissioner, just so we can know that employee count that is a variable in terms of the required parking spaces. And then there's just six and seven. Six real quick is, we would like alcohol service to commence only after receipt of an approved site plan from the planning board. And then seven, we are certainly amenable to any other conditions that this board may be willing to attach. We would ask that these conditions would be attached in writing on the actual permit. And I'm just realizing why some folks may have been commenting. I think I stepped back from the mic, and I hope, certainly hope it wasn't difficult to hear me. In any event, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, Jeff, yeah?
I, I have a critical question for me, for Shauna. The statement that this is our last license is critical to me. So, so what's the deal on wine and malt and full?
So it's, this is the only annual wine and malt restaurant license left.
How about full liquor license?
There are currently no annual all beverage licenses available in town, which is why Pates went to special legislation to get an annual all alcohol license.
And, and so when the new Mexican restaurant opens up, what do we do then?
They've applied for a seasonal license, which was approved by the board and forwarded to the ABCC.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Hi, how are you? Chris Luciano, Nicholsham Funeral Home. Just wanted to take a few moments. First of all, I support, you know, local businesses and the town and the community. You know, thinking about this, we've been closed for the last two months, so you haven't even seen, and I've been diverting everybody to our other facility in Orleans. So I have a lot of concerns. So first off, for 20 years that I took over here, we had Chatham Bakery, we had Emma Bellas, and before Chatham Bakery, we had, I mean, I can't think of his name, was the other bakery from, who took over Zia's and now the Old Hopper.
Forgive me, but I, I appreciate your style, but you need to keep your mouth right up to the microphone.
No problem, no problem. So my, my situation is this. So when coming to our funeral home, you know, we have, for 20 years, you know, we've been a good neighbor, we're good to the community, we try to accommodate anywhere we can, but it's always been a challenge to try to, you know, try to run our business and try to also accommodate the nine parking spots at the bakery. What happens is, you know, folks just come in and, you know, they come in early. We place out cones, you know, at the, you know, funeral home, it's, there's no parking, we block it off. People still go, and I don't know if we ever tried telling someone not to park in the area that you're trying to, you know, where they can't park before they had a cup of coffee. It's not, it's not a pleasant or a good behavior. But we try to, you know, we try to always be a good neighbor, but it's not, it doesn't work. We try different things. We, I changed the parking lot around, so I put, for an example, some spots, and I left the center area open. I call those ghost spots for my staff and team to park it, so we can have multiple parking areas. We can accommodate 40 parking spots at least, but still folks, you know, from living here for the years, and, and I get it. We look at the other way. The challenge is, when we try to run services, we can't. You know, we just, it, it becomes more stressed than what it really should be. The other thing, you know, we try to do, you know, we, again, we put up cones, people go. The valet, I, the great effort, I commend you for that. But I know you're not getting the complaints, but I have, I've gotten complaints from folk that've been trying to go and that, that do not know we're closed, and they try to come to the facility, and they're backed up in the middle of the road. They can't get in. I had, you know, ranchscapers that come, you know, they park in the middle. They were trapped in, so nobody could get out. It became chaos. Again, I'm a good neighbor, I looked the other way, but now we're going to talk about liquor, right? We're going to have liquor license. I got to run a business. We have Collins Lane in the middle, you have nine spots, and I got my parking lot. How am I going to control? And I know that's my problem, my challenge that I'm going to do. But how am I supposed to control your guys, your team, your people who park there at night? I'm not going to station it 24/7, you know? I'm a 24/7, 365. So I need access at all times. And, you know, right now, your valet guys are by property on the grass, you know, in the middle of Collins Lane. So when you're making a turn, you're pointing. I need me to stop. That was cool. But I tell them, you know, can't tell me to stop. And it's a road. You know, you, you can't just, again, I commend you for the plan, but I don't think it's the right plan right now. I think that you have to give it a little bit more thought. You know, I, I need our parking lot. I need our spaces. I know right now it's, we're closed, like I said, but we do, you know, I got to be there for the community. We got to service people. And then at nighttime, you know, when we have visitation, wakes, services at night, I'm not going to come, it's going to be a conflicting challenge, you know what I mean? Trying to run and distinguish who are for me and then who's for you. And, you know, it's not fair to the, the folks that are trying to do the, you know, pay the respects for their loved one, you know? It's, it's, you know, again, it's been a battle for years respectfully, but I always look the other way and take the high road, because I love everybody and I love our community, I love our neighbors. I want everybody to be successful. But it's becoming overwhelming to me and my team, my staff, my people, and our property, you know? It becomes, had to put up signs and people drove right through them, light poles backing up. I can't, I know we can't control people, but it, it is constant. I mean, I think I replaced last year seven, you know, sprinkler heads to, so now it's forced me to think of other, you know, other events. I don't know if I had to put a barrier fence, you know, other things to protect the property. It's just, I don't know. I think it's a great concept, but I think that you have to give it a little bit more thought in how you're going to do it and manage it. And like I said, I, I know you're, you're trying, and I appreciate that. But again, I haven't even opened up yet. I got like four more weeks, and then it's going to be a different ballgame. You know, it's going to be a...
I, I, I think we got your point.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Kristin?
I just, I'll be brief. I know we've all been here a long time, and I'm at the end of the agenda. But, but so anyhow, I, I feel like there's some conflicting issues going on here. Parking's been an issue. I've lived here long enough to know that whether you want a coffee in the morning or whether you want to have dinner, parking's a problem over there. And I, they could serve croissants and coffee until 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night, and parking would still be a problem. So maybe the parking issue needs to be solved, but I don't know how that directly correlates to this question about their liquor license. Anybody in this room that has tried to go to dinner in this town knows that it's impossible to get into dinner anywhere from, you know, May through September, let alone even in the rest of the year when some of our restaurants close down. If we have a restaurant that is willing to serve us food, we should be grateful for that, and we should really support another place where we don't have to stand online outside of Del Mar or be somewhere at 4:00 just to get in the door. Like, more options are always a good thing here. So parking is a problem, but alcohol or no alcohol, parking's still going to be a problem. And to me, they're unrelated issues of this liquor license versus the parking problem that obviously needs to be addressed. But that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I could just respond for a couple of minutes. I appreciate your time. I think there are, you really have to separate the morning traffic from what we hope to be the, you know, the lunch and dinner traffic. The morning traffic is something that this property's dealt with for generations. And, you know, I think Mario and his crew are working to try to find alternatives. For instance, none of his employees park at the site. Like many other businesses in town, they either bicycle there, park somewhere else, and walk there. So... So we're doing our best to reduce the parking demand that we're able to. The, you know, my brother talks about all the licenses that are within a half a mile. Well, that would be all of Chatham business community. So we think this is an opportunity to have a good restaurant providing quality food. The, we have the number of spots required for the number of seats that we have, that we're applying for. As things move forward, we will be finding alternate locations where we can valet cars. Much like Pisces uses the South Chatham Community Church for their parking, and Drifters uses the Christmas joy shop for their parking. And Chatham Inn, former Cranberry Inn, use the town parking lot. You know, the, all the businesses on Main Street use the municipal lot in the, behind the buildings. So it's, parking's a challenge. We have enough to get going, which is, you know, why we're limited our application to the current 18 seats. And we'll try to do better with the morning traffic. Perhaps the person that they have outside trying to direct traffic needs a little more education in terms of the effect it's having on the funeral home. So we want to work towards that. We think that the liquor license is really separate from that issue. You know, so from 11 o'clock on, you know, the, we're going to be dealing with sit-down lunch and dinner. For instance, we do have a bar inside, but it's not a bar where you can go in and just sit down and have a glass of wine. It's a bar that's going to be set for people to have dinner or lunch at. So the, the concern's about just having people there drinking and having a good time. Why do we want to let people have a good time? Well, that's another question. But, you know, so I think the limited number of seats, we have the parking for that, we're negotiating with neighbors now to work out additional parking, and when we get that additional parking, you know, we'll be back to talk to you. But I think that if you separate the lunch and dinner crowd from the coffee muffin crowd, you know, having a liquor license in that location is a good idea. As the gentleman said, you know, having these neighborhood places, you know, gives alternatives to the restaurants where you can't get reservations now. So, you know, they have a great track record, no violations, and a willingness to work with their neighbors and the town to solve the parking, which is almost an insoluble problem here in Chatham in the summertime. But the liquor license really isn't part of the parking problem. The parking problem exists no matter what. The liquor license provides greater incentive for applicant to work harder to help solve that problem. And the, because we think that that is going to be the aspect that gives the property a chance to be profitable. And that's what we all want, is profitable properties here in town. So I, thank you. What do we want to do here?
Before we do, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Before we do anything, can we just, for the sake of proper procedure, make sure that we enter into the record the names of all the people that spoke, because I'm not sure we got them all? I didn't get them all. And secondly, we have a letter that the council, and you referred to, that should be entered into the record. That was dated July 9th from...
Yeah, and that, and...
Mr. Doherty.
Mr. Tobin referred to that, and it will be entered into the record. And I think he gave us a pretty thorough summary of it.
There's two, actually. There's one that came on behalf of Mr. Doherty, and then Attorney Tobin had a second packet that he, I did not handle, or he had it today, that he was...
Okay, we'll enter that in the record as well. Janice, do you want to say something?
I do, I do. All right, I'll be really brief. We all know how popular the donuts were at the Chatham Bakery. Weren't there a lot of cars trying to park there, and it was managed, and the neighbors didn't complain the entire time? As far as I know, that it was the Chatham Bakery, and also during the time period, it was Amabel's. I'm just not sure why the parking issue is, has become so huge with this new business that is trying to come into town, which is, you know, going to be, it's a great asset to the town.
Thank you. And the lady, if you've had a chance, so if you could be very brief and tell us something that we haven't heard.
Sure. I think the difference with the liquor license is it's going to be noisier, and it's a neighborhood. We have little kids that are going to bed at night, and people are having a good time. And so they talk louder, they have more fun, and that's how it is. It just becomes noisier in the neighborhood. And it's very different from running in and getting a bagel or having a sandwich or having a croissant or anything else. That's just what happens with liquor.
Thank you.
Or beer and wine.
Thank you.
Most people are not going to go and just be sit by themselves at a table with just one person.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Cece from Mississauga Fitz, and I've been a patron of Davignon's for like over 15 years at their Hyannis location. And no matter what time of day, and lots of times it was in the evening, this is a couples' place. This is a, this is a place where you go with your friends. It's not a bar, it's not a rowdy place. You sit down, you have dinner, it's quiet. There was never, never a moment of rowdiness. You can sit and have a private conversation the whole night. So I'm, I'm surprised at this, this thing about a rowdy bar with alcohol is coming up because it, the, this is not, this, Davignon's is not that kind of place. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we want to have any more thoughts here from the board? What do we want to do here?
Mr. Chair, I'll have a thought. I think the addition of alcohol, it doesn't exacerbate the parking problem. I think you've got a morning parking problem, and I think you have a very reasonable request for a beer and wine license that'll complement a brunch and/or a lunch and dinner, and I buy the argument that it's a couples' type of atmosphere, and it's not going to be rowdy. So I'm going to vote to approve the application. Thanks.
Any other comment? I will say, I don't, I mean, the issue of parking and alcohol just seemed to me to be separate entirely. It, over the many, many years, and I think Corey put his finger on the issue, it's hard work to make it work, no matter what you're serving, whether it's donuts or croissant or whatever. And so I'm inclined to be supportive as well. Yeah, Corey?
Oh, I was going to say, parking, parking is a focal point that needs to be addressed and looked at and reviewed, whether we're serving coffee or wine. Agreed. To the fact of the concerns with the alcohol license being granted, if in the event things don't go as presented and things get rowdy, which I would, I would not expect of this establishment, these licenses are reviewed annually. So there's a mechanism for review and consideration to address any concerns on an annual basis that we can, we have. Or, and Shana could correct me, if there's a concern, I think the board has some discretion to address it prior to the annual renewal. So, I mean, there are mechanisms in place if it were to go to that direction.
If there were complaints or incidents on record with the police department, the board can certainly pull any licensee in for a hearing at any time.
Great, thank you.
Well, and I would add, I think you need to be very, very careful with respect to the indoor/outdoor issue until you get squared away with that. So that, and that's a potential issue for the neighborhood before you get squared away with that. So I would encourage you to have a strict compliance... I agree. Policy and administration. Yeah, I agree, and I've discussed that with my client. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Take a motion.
I move approval.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I don't want to...
Oh, come on.
May I just say one more quick thing before the...
If it is 30 seconds.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering if the board would at least consider adopting those conditions that both the applicant and the town...
We, we've heard you, we got it.
Okay.
We got it, thank you.
Thank you.
I've moved approval.
We should put the hours in, and it's an indoor-only service.
For the hours of 10 to 9 on Sundays and 11 to 9, six days of the week.
Yep.
And this is indoor only?
Indoor only, as per just reference, the application.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor, Select Board Member Metters?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dyken?
Aye.
Select Board Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Shell says aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we got the public hearings done. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah. So, we can get you some water. Mr. Failey.
I'll be brief, and hopefully my truncated report will support that. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works, is the water supply report for the month of June. So Veolia began July 1st for sewer operations, and all of, well, I should, I misspoke on here, all existing Weston and Sampson staff who wanted to stay were absorbed by the new Veolia contract. We had one employee that wanted to stay with Weston and Sampson and wanted to work closer to home, so it worked out in their favor. We're still doing migration of computer equipment as of last week, and vehicles, that's why we have a kind of an abbreviated report this month, because it, we didn't have all the pretty graphs for everybody to see. So I apologize for that. Work has begun on the training field well. The site's been cleared and grubbed. It's actually been excavated now at this point, but this picture just shows the site cleared and grubbed. And we're still waiting for Wells 10 and 11, we're still waiting on the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to put Well 10 online. They were in the queue. Apparently, there are a lot of requests from their office. But I'm happy to report Well 11 is back online. It was a warranty issue with the pump last month, so it didn't cost the town anything, but we were, we did install a VFD filter just as a precautionary measure, so we wouldn't run into any issues going down the road. We also installed one on Well 10, and we're just waiting to go live in Well 10. Pumping status, eight to 15 hours a day for the month of June, and the water storage hit low level on two days, 612 and 624, which is consistent, and one was a Monday, one was a Wednesday. It's consistent with the pattern we've been seeing over the years. And pumping report, we're slightly lower than we were last year, 65.8 million gallons. And I do apologize on this next chart, we do have the seven-day pumping totals in the right-hand column, which was an anomaly, so we won't have that next month. But we were, we were cutting and pasting frantically to try to get the report out in time. So, well, you see Well 11 has been offline the entire month of June, but it is back Again, here's just the year-to-date pumpage. Go to the USGS observation wells. Both observation wells are faring the same or slightly better than last year, and it's the best we've seen in the past three years. So both for Chatham and for Brewster. And then finally is the five-year comparison, which we are, we are right in line. 65 million gallons for the month of June, lines up pretty well with last year, and is close to our average. I'm happy to answer any questions, and it's been a long night. Thank you.
Thank you, a good report.
Thank you.
Same here, thanks.
Thank you.
The next up, we have Mr. Oliver with a BikeWays Committee Report. Welcome.
Good evening. I'll only be a few minutes also, but I have to personally give you a note here that says, "On behalf of the owner, the overwhelming majority of Chatham voters, who you only hear from at the ballot box, thank you for your outstanding service to the town."
Thank you very much.
Thank you also for the opportunity to personally report to you on behalf of the BikeWays Committee. In your agenda package is an outline of some of the committee's past and recent accomplishments, as well as initiatives in progress and future projects. I won't go through each and every item listed, but I will take a few minutes to highlight a few and entertain any questions. Whether on the Old Colony Rail Trail Scenic Bike Loop or elsewhere in Chatham, we don't need trail counts to tell us the obvious. There has been a steady increase locally in the use of bikes. On any cloudy summer day in and around downtown, bikes often move faster than cars. During the COVID pandemic, the Old Colony Rail Trail became known as a safe place where an individual or family could enjoy biking, walking, skateboarding, et cetera, and local hotels, inns, B&amp;Bs, as well as the bike stores, have promoted the use of bicycles in and around town. The job of the Chatham BikeWays Advisory Committee can best be summed up as doing the best we can to make sure that bikes safely coexist with other forms of transportation and recreational uses on our paths and our roads. To say that the committee has been active, productive, and results-oriented, making a measurable difference in our community appears obvious from the list of accomplishments provided to you. I hope that my outline adequately portrays a committee comprised of dedicated and motivated individuals who, through numerous projects, both major and minor, have distinguished themselves in the goal of making the Old Colony Rail Trail, Scenic Bike Loop, and town roads safer, more accessible, and enjoyable. In discharging these responsibilities, the committee has, in my opinion, done an admirable job of taking advantage of state, town, and private expertise and financial resources. Perhaps the best example of this was the assistance received from the Cape Cod Commission, Mass Trails on behalf of the state, and the outstanding, outside consulting firm of Howard Stein Hudson to design the new path on George Ryder Road. This led to securing a state grant and local CPA monies to raise the majority of the $865,000 of construction costs. In addition to the community preservation and financial partnership, local town support from the DPW, Traffic Safety Committee, Fire Department, Police Department, Airport Authority, Private and Commercial Abutters, Select Board, and the voting public were also critical to this project. The Old Colony Rail Trail is safer and more accessible today, with new, a new George Ryder Road off-road path, warning lights at Old Queen Anne Road, warning lights at Route 137, painted safety measures at Kroll Road, and soon to be implemented 15 mile-per-hour speed limit and installed mileage markers on Old Colony Rail Trail. Our future plans call for minor rerouting of the scenic bike route with enhanced signage and intersection improvements that we believe will further improve safety. Use of the Old Colony Rail Trail is now more enjoyable and maneuverable as on a multipurpose basis due to the Harwich-Chatham border marker, directional signage, updating of maps and informational kiosks, repaving and striping, and the installation of benches. You may remember... You may remember that the Old Colony Rail Trail Bench Program was approved by the Select Board on August 1st, 2023. I am pleased to report to you that the success of that program has far exceeded the initial expectations of four benches. The amount of $24,300 was donated for purchase and installation of nine benches, six of which have been installed to date. This amount of money is sufficient to cover the cost of the benches, installation of the benches, and also provide a reserve for future maintenance for years to come, perhaps over 20 years. Future projects include a review and formulation of a committee position statement on the Route 28 Crowell Road-Queen Anne Intersection Project, implementation of the scenic bike loop route and signage changes, establishment of a downtown bicycle parking plan, road shoulder and intersection improvements were needed, implementation of the speed limit and mileage markers, physically enhancing the Depot Road start end of the Old Colony Rail Trail, and an update to the Chatham Master Bicycle Plan. The Bicycle Committee has been successful in maintaining a full complement of seven members and has met monthly, each meeting being attended by Rob Fraley, which we very much appreciate, who has been an outstanding resource to the committee. Special acknowledgement is appropriate for my fellow team leaders, co-chair John O'Toole, who is here, and our secretary, Bob Noonan. Longstanding members Steve Wardle, Brad Vivins, and John O'Toole have been instrumental in providing continuity of leadership and working diligently on numerous projects. More recently appointed members, David Yates, has spent countless hours evaluating the safety and convenience of the scenic bike loop, leading to numerous recommendations to be evaluated over the months to come. And our newest member, Bill Lee, is a welcome addition to our committee. We look forward with enthusiasm to continuing our efforts to make biking in Chatham as safe and as enjoyable as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Bob, thank you so much for a great report, and kudos to you and John and the rest of the BikeWays Committee. You guys do a great job. You've done a super job here in Chatham. That, you know, multipurpose trail is just phenomenal on George Ryder. It just ties in West Chatham. It ties in the whole bike trail. It's just wonderful. It's a great asset, a great addition, ties in the airport. Really, really, it's just a wonderful addition. You guys have done a great job here in town, and I hold you up as one of our most highly functioning volunteer committees. I'm telling you, you guys get it done. So thank you very, very much. That's a great report. Really, really good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have to mention, thank you to Mr. Nacastro, who suggested that we not limit our bench program to four benches, but leave it open-ended, and we now have nine benches, and we could have 19 benches if we wanted to.
And you have one from the old cranks.
The old cranks.
The old cranks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I guess he's gone, so we'll move right on. Thank you very much. A great report and great work. Amen to Jeff's comments. Public comments on the business agenda. Anybody in the House here tonight? Anybody online? I don't see anybody. Frankly, not a surprise. Let's start with the one-day entertainment license and outdoor display and sale of goods. 400 Main Block Party Ms. Mueller. You didn't have any trouble getting in here on time.
I was just gonna say that. Couple hours later. I will be brief. I am requesting permission for a one-day entertainment license and some sale of goods. Last year, when Mondays on Main couldn't be in the park because Shakespeare was there, we moved that Monday to my property at 400 Main as an alternate site, and it worked out really well. The rest of the Mondays on Main haven't been all that great, and so we've sort of done away with them for this year. So we had planned a series of block parties based on that model that I did at 400 Main. We were gonna do one in West Chatham, one in North Chatham, mine at the East End, and then the hardware store was going to have one in town, but the merchants in Chamber parted ways with our event planner, and there was nobody really to head all of that up, so I sort of got left holding the bag, throwing my party, and the other three aren't happening this year. So next year, we will have all of those to complement the town. But so this is considered a one-off event because it's not part of a town-wide event. And so we will have live music. I have Chatham ice cream bars and Elwood's Row Bar sort of serving public and face painting and all of that. I cannot have a food truck, though, so this is sort of an aside on the food truck regulations. Because it's not a town-wide event, I can't have a food truck and have been unable to secure somebody who could provide food not on wheels. So just in the future, maybe look at that caveat in that bylaw that a one-off event on private property on Main Street can't have a food truck. Anyway, I just need permission to have my music and the other things I can provide. Please.
Shree?
We should look at that bylaw. For sure. I'm gonna move to grant this. I know you want to move it along.
Yeah, that's okay.
And appreciate that this was gonna be a bigger effort in the different neighborhoods of the town.
Yeah, that's the goal.
I think that's an awesome idea. I've always thought it has been, and I'm really happy to hear you guys.
And we're gonna pull it off. The folks in North Chatham were on board. The timing and the dates got complicated. This winter, we will be planning them, and the folks in West Chatham are already on board, mom and pops and Chatham moods and those folks. So it's in place. It's just the organization of it fell apart, and so we're gonna plan this winter for next year, and it will come off.
Planning early, yeah.
Yes.
That's great. Okay. I move to grant a one-day entertainment license to Christian Miller for amplified live music from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM, and approve the outdoor display and sales of goods at 400 Main Street on Tuesday, July 23rd, and look forward to having ice cream and oysters.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have a second from Mr. Nacastro. Just before I call the roll here, I'm just gonna say, I remember back, I can't remember whether it was, it must have been pre-COVID, there used to be a block party at 400 Main, which I attended on two or three occasions with my family.
But we had no food truck regulations then.
Well, I don't remember whether there was a food truck or not, but there was a lot of barbecue out there.
Yeah.
That I do remember. So anyway, great, great, great idea, and I'm very supportive. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next case.
And you did also a great job tonight.
Thank you. The disposing of deceased marine mammals on Chatham Beach's policy. Mr. Failey.
Hello again.
Hello again.
So I'll just pull this up on the screen. So we took the Select Board's comments and public comments, really tried to make some thoughtful decisions, revisions to the policy. You know, we tried to make it as detailed but as simple as possible. One of the things that we really, you know, had a difficult time was physically removing or burying dead, deceased marine mammals on private property. Access is the number-one challenge that we have trying to get our equipment out there. There's also liability concerns about damaging infrastructure on private property, irrigation, septic systems, landscaping, that kind of thing. So really wanted to kind of exclude that piece of it. We certainly will help property owners. Tried to line up a contractor that may be able to do that, but really don't think it would be in the town's best interest to enter private property to dispose of a deceased mammal.
Shree?
I'd be hard-pressed to see a seal or something that is gonna be on, like, irrigation or something. Maybe it could just, like, go up there and die or something. Is that...
No, I mean, it's the access. If we had to drive the backhoe across somebody's lawn.
Oh, the access, yeah.
To get to the only point where you can access the beach, that would be the problem.
Got it. I just, we have a place in Stage Harbor at the Cut that's called Whale Beach, because there is a big whale that's buried down in the sand underneath, by the cut. Anyway, I just wanted to make that comment. I'm fully good with all of this. Yeah.
Jeff?
Yeah, I am as well. I do have one question. I had occasion to see a seal on Conservation Foundation Beach. What do we do then? Do we just call the DPW? And then, that's not private or public, is it?
They have that conservation land, so we would work with...
Chatham Conservation Foundation land.
So it's still, I guess it's still a town, you know, asset. So we would work with conservation to try to get that buried.
Okay. Maybe we ought to add that. I mean, just, anyway. Thanks.
Corey?
No, I mean, we'll have to get creative. I mean, I know, growing up in South Chatham, down Cocko Cove, on the non-kind-of-public section, we've had whales, seals, all kinds of fun animals wash up since I've grown up there. So we have to get creative of something, well, sunfish, whatever. I mean, we gotta get creative about, you know, if something really large were to land there, I guess.
Yeah, if we were to be able to access it from the beach and not drive across, you know, drive, you know, lengthy period of time over sand, you know, that's, you know, a possibility. But we just don't want to drive through a landscaped backyard next to a pool, and we're trying to drive a backhoe through there, you know.
My only other comment is, I guess there's gonna have to be some little give-and-take with reporting this, because if it's this scenario, we call DPW. If it's this scenario, we call this person. If it's a shark, we call this conservancy. So we gotta probably have a, I think the normal person isn't really gonna know who to call. They're gonna just kinda...
There's a lot of public outreach out there that people know to call IFA if there's a problem.
Right. But if it's a shark, that's not the proper...
No. But I'm just saying that I think that this is well-thought-out, and, you know, this will serve its purpose for what we need as far as, you know, a policy.
It's a good starting point.
And we need to have safe handling of den marine mammals because of their pathogens and grossness.
If I may, Mr. Chair, this will be reviewed annually, so we can certainly take a year of lessons and revise it accordingly.
Good. Move approval.
If I may, just very quickly, I have two things. One, there are a couple of places where Board of Selectmen survived. Second line on the first page, and then the signature page, and I see that you got one in paragraph four on page two. So that gave me the temerity to suggest that we conform it all the way through. My other question is, there was a comment, and maybe this is, I'm not sure if this is in the memo or not, but there was a comment when we first reviewed this to run this by IFA. Was that done?
I spoke with IFA and had a conversation with them based on, you know, what their expectations were.
So we're good with that comment?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Then, did we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay, all those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Paint stewardship legislation. We have Judy Giorgio and Mr. Irwin. Are you on as well?
Hi, thank you.
Go ahead, Judy. I...
Hi. I'm just going to introduce Thomas Irwin. We're here to request that you give us a letter of support for the paint stewardship legislation. And Thomas Irwin is a mass paint stewardship advocate and is going around getting support for this legislation, and I think he can answer your questions much better than me. So I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Irwin.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, to give you my name is indeed Tom Irwin, and I live in Dalton, Massachusetts. I think you may enjoy knowing a little bit about my background. I was a chemical engineer for 30 years for General Electric and then went back to school and became a primary care physician. And in my retirement, I've been active in town committees, one of which was the Dalton Waste Management Recycling Committee. And when I arrived at that, we were $30,000 in debt, and we were overwhelmed. And as we were sorting through all the issues, it was clear that we were troubled by issues that are true throughout the state, troubles with landfill space, escalating fees. And of note, Massachusetts currently has the highest hauling fees in the United States at $122 per ton. And we were looking for a solution. I visited a landfill that I knew was extremely well-refined. It's actually a four-acre landfill space with a not only separate glass, but clear glass, green glass, so forth. And that's where I learned about paint care. I was in New York State, and I thought it was a fantastic idea. I saw it as an important first step for us. And so I wanted to confirm that it was really working well before I advocated for such a thing. And I went to retailers and talked to consumers in Vermont, New York, and Connecticut, and I found universal, not only acceptance, but enthusiastic acceptance. So it's for this reason, since it was not only gonna serve Dalton, but the entirety of the state, that I became an advocate. And just to clarify, paint stewardship is a program where unwanted paint can be returned to any participating paint retail store any day the store is open without a disposal cost and without regard for where the paint was purchased. This program is absolutely voluntary for retailers and transfer stations. They may come and go freely as their business or their program demands. And the cost to consumers is 75 cent fee per gallon at the time of purchase. And this pays for the hauling costs. This pays for a portion of the reprocessing costs, and it also pays for educational materials that the nonprofit that runs this program hands out to help people minimize the amount of paint they generate. And this program also allows for a system where the latex paint does not get landfilled. It goes and gets reblended and reused. And it also has a system where the oil-based paints do not get just incinerated. They get sent to be used as coal fuels presently, but they're also working hard on technology to be able to recycle those as well. And importantly, this is not a new thing. This program has been working in Oregon since 2008, and in our neighboring states of Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, and Vermont for over a decade. Recently, New York has joined on, so we're a little bit late to the party. I think you'll be pleased to know that the benefits that this thing is going to, or this program will provide, is it's gonna be a service your residents will value. As I gathered over 3,000 signatures in support for this legislation, time and again, I heard, "I'd be happy to pay 75 cents for the ease of being able to dispose my paint." I know there on the Cape, you have many towns that have a paint recycling program, and I appreciate that. I think that's a great idea. But there are many of us, particularly in the western two-thirds of the state, that don't. And when this law gets passed, it will serve as a model for future legislation that will address larger items such as mattresses, solar panels, rechargeable lithium batteries, and packaging, which I'm sure are all near and dear to your art. And also, another benefit is this will not present a cost to municipalities. It will actually decrease your household hazardous waste day costs by 50%, which is roughly the amount of oil-based paint you gather each year, which will free RDP money for other important solid waste issues. I think you'll be pleased to also know that this legislation is supported strongly by the Mass Municipal Association, as noted in their testimony to the Environment Natural Resource Committee, which I believe you have a copy of in your handout, the information you get with your agenda. You also have a report from the Mass EP on their 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan, the residential section of that, where you can see highlighted in yellow that the product stewardship in general and paint stewardship in particular are called out as key tools to help the state reach its goal of zero waste. And interestingly, what the timing and the numbers are on that is, compared to 2018 as their baseline, they want a 30% reduction in waste by 2030 and a 90% reduction by 2050. And without stewardship programs covering not just paint, but all the other items that we've listed, which are probably more important to you, it would be impossible to achieve these goals. And paint stewardship is recognized as the... And paint stewardship is recognized as the best model for product stewardship legislation. It was devised through cooperation over a six-year period of arguing and haggling with the retailers, with manufacturers, with consumer groups, and state agencies, all working to try to figure out the middle ground where everybody could live with the final result. And that is what we're passing as laws. The other thing that's important about this law is this is essentially the same law that's in all of our neighboring states with the law and the other remaining six states throughout the US that have the law. And the importance of that is it streamlines cost and it makes it easy for the paint care, the national agency that takes care of all the hauling and reprocessing, to just advocate a program almost nationwide. I also want to comfort you with knowing that not only are the paint manufacturers and paint retailers in support of this law, but also there was broad support from both sides of the aisle within the legislature for this legislation. And currently, there are 74 municipalities that have passed similar resolutions or endorsements with more expectancy. So why am I asking for your folks' help if I already have 74 endorsements and municipal resolutions? And the answer is that when I initially had conversations with the legislators on the House Ways and Means Committee, they suggested maybe 40 resolutions by mid-April would be sufficient to demonstrate enough municipal priority that the Ways and Means Committee would take this matter up and act on. Well, on early August, or early April, excuse me, I gave them 45 resolutions. And they appreciated that, but they had yet to pass the bill. So my sense of the situation is that we need to even work harder and do more, pass more resolutions. And it's going to be something that our residents are going to like, where it's not going to cost us anything, and improving our environment is critical. So it is for that reason that I, or all those reasons, that I ask the Select Board tonight to consider passing a resolution in Chatham and supporting this effort and hopefully getting this legislation passed in the next couple of weeks. In fact, tomorrow I go to the State House and hand the legislators the resolutions to date that we have to demonstrate that it is indeed, again, worth their interest. So I appreciate your willingness to entertain this topic tonight. And I thank you for your consideration and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, shall I say Dr. Irwin? I heard you say you were a physician.
I am indeed a doctor, and thank you. Time is fine, but either one is good.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions. Have you approached any other towns on the Cape, on Cape Cod?
Yes.
And have any signed on with letters? Do you know which ones?
Yes. Robinstown, on Brewster, and Orleans, and Bourne.
Okay, thank you. Does the legislation, in the materials that we got, there is some material regarding the organization called Paint Care.
Yep.
Is that the entity that would administer this, that would receive this? Is there a complete pass-through of money? Does it go through the state, the 75 cents, and then goes over to Paint Care? Or does it go directly to Paint Care? And is Paint Care the only entity that services this stewardship concept? For the legislation?
Right. You have a great sense of what it actually is. Your questions are all, pretty much all, yes. Paint Care was created by the paint retailer or paint manufacturers to manage this so they didn't have to be bothered with it. And the 75 cents goes straight to Paint Care from the manufacturers and it defrays all of their costs. I think you'll be pleased also to know, as per the legislation, that Paint Care is required on a state-by-state basis to do a third-party audit of their finances annually, which are submitted to each state's DP, which then reviews that and assures that the state is operating as a nonprofit.
Is that in the legislation that you're sponsoring?
It is.
Okay. And I just had, there was attached also one pager of concerns and responses. Did you prepare that? Judy, do you know who prepared that?
I did.
You did, okay, okay.
And it was, what I did was to just give you a little more background to that, is in that page you'll see referenced hyperlinks to additional articles, newspaper articles. And what I did was I took, you know, essentially word for word, their concern, and that is the, that's what I've listed on the page, and then the response is mine.
Okay. So there are three bills that are referenced in the draft resolution, House 823, Senate 542, Senate 551. Those are the ones we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. Well, and I guess my last question is, is I understand the way this process works. If this all passes, if, we have a hardware store in Chatham, so if the local hardware store wanted to participate, and I would assume Paint Care would, and go around soliciting potential participants? Is that how that works? And then if they agreed, and I have some old paint, I can just bring it to the hardware store and I never see it again? I don't have to pay them anything to deal with it?
That is correct. And if your store participates, it's totally voluntary. And they would, they're more than likely, Paint Care wanting to have as many places as possible, will call them and say, "Hey, are you interested?" And it's a very simple process to apply and it's a very simple process to disconnect from if at some point they do wish to do that.
Well, I think obviously the program will work best if, in fact, there is an active recruiting campaign on the part of Paint Care to get local participants. Thank you very much. It sounds like a very helpful prospect. I appreciate your taking the time to tell us about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just, you mentioned the retail establishments seem to be the logical collection locations, but I heard you mention transfer stations, which is municipal. Is that going to be a part of it in a significant way? Would you anticipate?
If I use Vermont's numbers as a model, it's like 12 to one, 12 retailers to one transfer station, something in that neighborhood.
Okay.
In fact, it's even more than that, but it's in that ballpark. And it's what I believe, my sense of it is, obviously, I, you know, I'm not Paint Care. They look for places like Otis, Massachusetts, where, that's kind of far from any paint store. And they would go to that transfer station and say, "What can we do to help you out to make this work for you so that you can collect paint for us?"
Yep.
And that would be how, that is the situation in which I would anticipate that transfer stations would be asked to help. Of course, if there's an existing system and they wish to continue, they would be more than welcome to.
So just the other part of it, the way this works is the manufacturer produces the paint and for every gallon, they put 75 cents into Paint Care and then that's added on to their wholesale price when it goes out to their distribution system? Is that how that works?
Well, we'll use arbitrary numbers. If a gallon of paint costs 50, which is not a bad guess, 50 bucks, it will be listed on your receipt as 50 dollars and then separately listed will be 75 cent fee for Paint Care.
But Paint Care is getting the funds directly from the manufacturer. Am I wrong about that?
No, yeah, right. The money goes from the retailer to the manufacturer and the manufacturer sends it directly to Paint Care.
Okay, okay. Anybody else, anything?
Mr. Vermon?
Oh, Greg.
Greg Vermon, Director of Natural Resources, just wanted to give a local town of Chatham data point to some of what Dr. Irwin's talking about. We submitted a household hazardous waste invoice today that had about $4,000 worth of paint on it. So that would have been taken up by the state system and we have six of those a year. So it would be a good cost savings that comes out of the operating budget for the town.
Thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board-
I think you want to refer to this. You don't want to read it, but you want to refer to it.
Yes, there's a resolution in the packet. Just the title is Resolution in Support of Paint Stewardship Legislation. I move that the Select Board adopt this resolution tonight.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Irwin. Sounds like a really good program. I hope we can get it, you can get the legislature to enact it.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the support.
Now, do you need, this thing has signatures and we were unanimous 5-0. Do we need signatures here?
If you're okay with using your stamps, I can use yours.
Stamps are fine. Yep, thank you.
Yep, that's fine. And the impact is the more signatures and names they see, the more compelled they feel to abide the resolution.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts in this regard. It's a big deal. Our next item is-
Thank you.
And thank you to Judy. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There's a portion of the next agenda that I need to recuse myself on, so I'm going to recuse myself from the entire discussion.
Okay. We may be lost without you, but... Mr. Keon, do you want to bring up the Waterways Advisory Committee Regulations Proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, evening, rather, late evening, actually. I will try to be brief as well. The Waterways Committee did review these regulations for a couple of years, actually more than a couple. The regulations were frankly getting a little bit stale relative to other events that have been occurring and other approvals and changes to the way we've been operating. The majority of all of these are really just trying to get these regulations up to date, housekeeping, as they say. As I indicated in my memo, one of the primary changes was sort of getting it consistent with the Waterways bylaws and regulations that have been now promulgated and endorsed by the town. So we wanted to make sure that these were aligned with those Waterways regulations and bylaws. The Waterways user permit was a new process and we were still in the old regulations referencing sort of the old way of doing business. I'd be happy to go through kind of the changes. There's not that many and kind of highlight, you know, why we were making the change. Very simply, on the first page, down at the bottom, number three, we used to have a town landing buyer's permit if you wanted to buy commercial catch at a facility. Concurrently, the harbor master was issuing independent packers permits for the fish pier. It became quite obvious that they were, in essence, redundant. They were both, cost the same, they were both serving, in essence, the same purpose. So we realized last year, why don't we just combine them and make it a single permit instead of having two of essentially the same permits and call them the independent packers permit through the office of the harbor master. Next page, and this is what I referenced for the Waterways user permit. We no longer have ramp passes, if you will, at Riders Cove, which was something that we used to monitor, you know, both who was using the ramp as well as who could sell fish. And we want to get that up to date with the Waterways user permit. I did notice, and I have to admit, an error on my part as we were moving paragraphs around and so forth. On that top of the page two, I reference C-section 12. When I was moving things around, it's actually section six. So, sorry for that mistake. Further down in section four, this is a little bit different. As the Waterways regulations were promulgated in it, the harbor master has jurisdiction over establishing waiting lists for our special use permits for the chartering of boats out of the town landings. In fact, the previous harbor master had instituted a waiting list last year. He was concerned that some of the facilities were getting overtaxed and he wanted to put a pause on things and let things sort of, you know, see how things worked. The current harbor master, Jason, who's here as well, concurs that he just wants to take another year. So he has also, you know, maintained that waiting list. That is a change from previously. If the harbor master did want to approve a special use permit, a new one that came through, and then it came to the board for your ultimate approval, you still have the ability to, for whatever reasons, you know, not approve it. So you still have an ability to, you know, put your stamp of approval or not on a new application. The next one again is that six, just clarifying that now Waterways user permits are required to utilize our town facilities. Probably the biggest, and I indicated this in the memo, formatting change was kind of lumping all our parking restrictions in a much more kind of easily readable format. You know, as I think the board's well aware of over the years, we kind of piecemeal the way parking is approved and enforced, if you will. This way, all of the parking and how you can use the facility is summarized in this one group, section 10. To highlight an additional change that came, other than just the formatting, that came with a recommendation and approval of the Waterways Committee, was an active user of the facility had suggested and brought up to the Waterways that currently, as it's, you know, signage down at Riders Cove, there are six spaces that are available for non-residents off-season only. The rest of the trailer parking spaces are all resident during the main season, but then in the off-season, six become available. As the fishing sort of has changed and perhaps maybe primarily the bass fishing has lessened, there are many days when there are available spaces, particularly during the week. And we do get some non-residents that still currently have to park well up on Old Commeres Road when there are multiple places available in our trailer spaces. So he made the recommendation to at least allow two of those six spaces be available during season, first come, first served. It's not dedicated to a non-resident. But at least if there's some available, the non-resident has the ability to park in the closer area. And the Waterways Committee, you know, felt that was appropriate. So that is a new change in the parking kind of layout for that trailer parking area. And the only other somewhat subtle change for that same type of location is it used to be those trailer spaces would become available for the non-residents in October. The same gentleman recommended, and the Waterways Committee agreed, "Let's make it November," primarily because the tuna shoulder season seemed to be getting into that October timeframe and he felt that the residents should still have, you know, a preference over access to those other spaces. So that's why that that date is now 11, meaning November, as opposed to October. And then, there's really not much more. We did change appropriately the parking fees or violations to 75 to be consistent. But other than that, as I indicated, it's pretty much just getting these regulations aligned with what events have occurred and, you know, get them up to date, in all honesty. Happy to respond to any questions. Happy to respond to any questions if you have as to why some of these were put forward, and we'll go from there.
Jeff.
Thanks, Mr. Shell. Ted, thanks for that summary. Appreciate it. Just have, I guess, a couple of comments or a couple of questions on number four. When the maximum number of permits has been reached, do we... Does it say what the maximum number of permits are? How do we know that the maximum number's been reached for the special use permits?
Jason Holm, Harbor Master. Thank you, Mr. Dykens. So that language was put into the Waterways Regulations during the change back in 2019. It's consistent with the verbiage that's used for establishing a waitlist in a mooring field. Stewart had instituted the waitlist based on the feedback it was getting that the landings were taxed. I continue that right now as we go through the process of renewal for these. Last year, we had 26 permits, I believe. I'm not sure if that's a magic number or not. There's a lot of factors that go into it. You know, traditionally, we've had some permit holders that operate out of different landings. Some are primarily out of one and not the other. So it's kind of hard when you look at the overall numbers to determine use because there's permit holders that may be allowed to operate at different areas, but they may not be using it. So that's something that I'm trying to gather this year as we go through the renewal process and we're observing the use at the town landings, is trying to see which landings are truly getting used by the permit holders. And we've also... Some of the numbers are somewhat skewed because we've seen an increase in some of the off-season charters. C-Duck in particular, that's kind of taken off over the past few years. So we also have permits that may not be used during the traditional summer boating season that are getting used in the off-season. So the plan right now is just that we've paused things to take a look at it. I think we have two people on the waitlist and really want to take a look at the renewals that we have this year, see where those numbers lies, and assess the use of the town landings over the next year to really try to get a good number of what that magic number is and whether we need to maybe look at off-season numbers v. in-season numbers and really further establish which landings are getting used for what.
Gotcha. That's a good answer. I mean, it's by landing. It's just by experience and by landing. Ryder's Cove gets all packed up, then you're going to take another look.
Yes.
And as I ended...
We have granted special use permits, you know, for... Ducks is a great example. We've done that more of late, of the last two or three years. There've been a lot of permits, so I think it's something we got to monitor. I didn't know whether it was a magic number. The only other thing I had, a couple... Bridge Street Landing, on parking, there's no restrictions on parking. Is there... I know the ramp itself is very tide limited, but why no restrictions there?
We... Currently, there are no restrictions. Bridge Street has not had a resident or, you know, taxpayer-type restriction to date. I think we all recognize how small it is. I honestly have had some of the shell fishermen come forward and say, you know, what about here? That is something that, you know, could come forward, have it discussed at Waterways and bring forward as another change, if that's appropriate. I think is... Actually, at the beginning of the meeting, when we were talking about access to the water, we've seen a lot of our facilities get restricted on who can use it and who cannot. And it's always that wrestling of, do we want to provide our access to whomever? Or do we want to restrict it to certain types of individuals? And this is just a small location example.
It's just... It's just an odd ramp to have, you know, because it's really small and it's hard to park. So it's kind of moot, to be honest with you.
I watched someone just last week in a van park or driving down at near low tide, and his wheels of the van were in the water and the trail... Or the boat was still well above the water. And he was like... I'm like, well, it's wrong tide for that, not the right spot.
The only other question or comment I had was the number 15, no bus or other passenger conveyance vehicle. Will the seating capacity greater than 25 may park? I mean, do we not have transports now that have 25 or more? I mean, especially at Ryder's Cove, if I might add, or not?
That's a remnant from when we established the original special use permit, and we tried to come up. We didn't want to have tour buses coming down unloading passengers for seal tours, harbor tours, or whatever. I have not counted the seats, but the current beachcomber bus may in fact have more seats than that. It has not been an issue. It's a mini-bus per se, but it may technically have more seats than that. So...
Ted, I'm not nitpicking. I just think you might revisit that number, that's all. And I think you guys have done a great job. Our town landings are under attack by all force, all sorts of forces, commercial and otherwise. So we really need to tighten it up, and I really appreciate the work by the Waterways Committee as well. I mean, you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate this document. Thanks. That's all I had.
Anybody...
Want to move approval?
Go ahead and move it.
Make a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. The Gulf of Maine Offshore Wind Project Presentation and Consideration of Letter of Comment. Ms. Davis.
Thanks. I'll be brief. I know it's been a long night. It's almost 9:30. Just take note. I just wanted to bring you a little bit up to snuff on the Gulf of Maine Offshore Wind Project had a public comment review period that started, I believe, in May. They've been going through a vetting process of offshore wind in the Gulf of Maine for a while now. And slowly, the sighting suddenly became off of just west of... southwest of Georgia's Bank and just east of Province Town Truro and Wellfleet. And we got wind of this through an article in Independent... Yeah, Province Town Independent. And the Cape and Islands Municipal League Association, which we're all members of, makes up of all the towns, had one of the Select Board members get up and express some concern that we had not had any opportunity to weigh in, learn about it, have any comments. So consequently, we were able to, at our annual meeting, go to Martha's Vineyard and talk to Vineyard... Martha's Vineyard Commission about the projects down there. Some of the concerns have been about not just the sighting, but also the transmission easements that go along with these. And there's been quite a bit of outcry in the Outer Cape. And basically, Boem has had one virtual meeting on the Cape and one public meeting on the Cape. Most of their meetings during this process have been in New Hampshire and Maine as they've gone through everything. This isn't about pro or anti-wind. This is about having a seat at the table to talk about what are the concerns going forward, especially in light of the state's involvement, the municipality's involvement in the relationship of an auction sale of that area. What are the impacts to the communities in general? And, you know, when can we, you know, pretty much get some of the answers to our concerns? So the comment period ended July 1st, and Cape and Islands Municipal League Association managed to get a letter in to request an extension of that period to coincide with the environmental assessment that's ongoing at this time. So basically, what I've asked is, in the packet, you see that there is the sighting where it is. There's also the process, Boem's process, of where they're at in the authorization of this project. It's a different project. These are floating wind turbines. This is, you know, a very large, never-done project. There is, you know, there is a lot of things that we have questions about. Some of it, most of it, is about mitigations around fisheries, mitigation around, you know, what happens if there's debris after a storm, things like that, that we really would be impacting. The transmission easements aren't included in the auction sale. The easement's given, but the plan is never put in place until after the fact. So we're kind of vulnerable to, you know, where these things are going to go, where they're going to go on land. This one is proposed. It has like five or six sightings. Some of it going... Proposing to go through Stillwagon Bank Sanctuary, which according to some of the people who've been working with Stillwagon say that the only activity that is allowed that's commercial is fishing in Stillwagon. So there's a lot of what-ifs about the project. And, you know, I just felt if, you know, if we're not at the table, we're going to get eaten. And we need to at least be able to slow the process to where we can get some public meetings on the Cape, have the public be able to ask some specific questions, because this is all new technology. This is all new to all of us, and to figure out what we need to be asking for in the process. So the letter will go out, and hopefully you'll approve the signature to support Simla's request. And hopefully, we'll get some response from the Bureau of Boem. Did that all make sense? Because it's 9:30.
It did make sense.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Shereen, you know, I'm really pleased that you brought this to the board's attention. When I looked at the proposed sale notice lease areas, it's really not all that far from the... Never mind the Elbow, but the end of the Cape, P-Town. And to mess with Stillwagon Bank is just... They've got to really be careful. That is... That's Marine Sanctuary. And your point made about commercial activity only there is our transmission line is going to go through Stillwagon. Good luck. I mean, I think that's going to be a very difficult sale.
And this is just one of several lease opportunities that are going to occur in this area. And each one of them has their own transmission easement. Each one of them has their own plan. So there's no cohesiveness in some of this, which we've been seeing with what's happening with Vineyard Wind. And then, the other concern is, for me, was when Vineyard Wind, you know, that project went on, and then the abutting wind proposal, they dropped that... The proposal backed out. But what they left was some infrastructure in the water. They weren't required to...
To clean it up.
To clean up. So it's sitting there with no, you know, no plan. Though there is a plan if, you know, at the life of the end of the turbines, there is that part of it. But there's a lot of speculative business activity that's going on here that we need to just be asking lots of questions so that we make sure that we're getting the most out of this that we can and that we're not impacting some of the other things that are occurring within our... Within our own...
Absolutely. What do you need from us?
Well, it's a letter. It's just to sign on to the letter to supporting Cape and Islands Municipal. It's at the end of the packet. It's pretty straightforward. And it does express some concerns that we have. Similarly, we... Our comments, we couldn't comment because we had so many questions that we couldn't get answers for to be able to do a factual... Because there's... Boem has a very specific way you're supposed to comment. I mean, this is very much a moving forward, you know, kind of, you know, renewable energy is moving forward.
Look at how the National Seashore responded. It was...
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot. So they need to hear it. They need to know what the concerns are. And hopefully, that will help inform everybody as to where we go from here.
And move endorsement.
I'll second that. Just make one comment. I have no problem signing on to this. Makes a whole lot of sense. But I also want to be completely prepared for a position letter, you know, because at some point, we want to take that action, too, hopefully. So...
As I said, this is just a part of a very bigger project, which, you know, there's a lot of wind energy off of us. So, you know, we need to really, really...
Your homework.
And look at other communities and how they've dealt with it.
Good.
Go ahead, Dee.
I won't be... I... Thank you, Shereen. I'm just surprised that this is so... Is this solely in the hands of the state? I would have thought the federal...
No, this is a federal project.
B-O-E-M is a federal...
Yeah, and they are allowed to do the transmission easement, but it's left up to the municipalities and the state about how they're permitting the onshore part, you know, whether it's a conservation issue, whether it's, you know, where it's sighted, you know, that... Those are some of the issues.
That's why the letter is addressed to the governor.
We addressed it to the governor because the state, they're very supportive of the projects. And we wanted to make sure that the governor is aware that the Cape delegation is... Needs to... They need to express that voice for us. You know, Salem is getting a huge pile of money, and we all know where, you know, Lieutenant Governor came from. And, you know, New Bedford's gotten a huge pile of money, too. But, you know, there's a lot of impact. We'll change some shorelines, for sure.
Well, I like the reference included to the National Park Service in the letter. I read the Park Service letter. As Jeff said, if you look at the map, the closest area to these leases is Cape, is the lower and outer Cape. So I support this.
Okay, so do I. Good job, Shereen. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Thank you. So appointments and reappointments. I think, oh, we've got a number of these here. So number one, we have, I think, what do we have here? One appointment potential for Aunt Lydia's Cove. Is that right?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I know with correspondence on Mr. Bates, I would suggest, Mr. Bates, we hold on any action on him to confirm. I had a conversation with him today. They're not meeting at the moment. I would think... I just want to... I would hold on Mr. Bates's appointment to confirm his status.
Okay.
I think he might be moving forward with other plans.
Okay, okay.
But I don't want to speak too quickly.
Okay. Any other nominations for the Aunt Lydia's Cove? Okay, moving forward. Board of Health, we have interviewed one person who's expressed an interest in being reappointed, and we have another one to be interviewed. So that gives us one potential candidate.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Carol Gordon as an associate member of the Board of Health until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked, or her successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Okay. The Committee for People with Disabilities, we have one open seat, two open alternate seats, and two members up for reappointment. Both members, Dr. Ward and Ms. Moore, have expressed interest in being reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Dr. Alan Ward as a member of the Committee for People with Disabilities until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or her successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Joan Moore as a member of the Committee for People with Disabilities until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or her successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
And moving forward, Community Housing Partnership, we have one open seat, three members up for reappointment.
Mr. Shell, I move to appoint Carolyn McClellan as a member of the Community Housing Partnership until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or her successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Shell, I move to appoint Bruce Bean as a member of the Community Housing Partnership until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or her successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Ms. Davis.
Lastly, I move to appoint Bill Beistrum as a member of the Community Housing Partnership until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or her successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Community Preservation Committee, three members up for reappointment. Bruce Bean, Gary Tennyson, and Debbie Aikman. Debbie Aikman has yet to respond to whether she wishes to continue. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Shell, I move to appoint Bruce Bean as a member of the Community Preservation Committee until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or her successor is appointed.
Second.
Just to clarify, I think Kathy, did you want to speak to Mr. Bean and Gary Tennyson? These are representatives.
Yes, Mr. Bean is a representative of the Community Housing Partnership. And Mr. Tonison is a representative of the...
Open space.
Open space. Thank you, yeah. Open space, thank you, yes. And Ms. Aikman, with what has gone on recently in her world, I have not really persisted in reaching out to her. I figured she needed a little bit of time, which is why she is not on here tonight.
That's fine. So I, do we...
Second, I get, if I...
I think we have a motion and a second on Bruce Bean. All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Okay.
Somebody else is up.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Gary Tennyson as a member of the Community Preservation Committee until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Okay. Energy and Climate Action Committee, three members up for reappointment. Ms. Holt and Mr. Wirthschafter have expressed an interest in being reported, reappointed, and Mr. Scott has yet to answer the question.
So Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Dee Dee Holt as a member of the Energy and Climate Action Committee until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or successor is appointed.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Bob Wirthschafter as a member of the Energy and Climate Action Committee until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or successor is appointed.
Second.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says no. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Historical Commission, two members up for reappointment, two alternate members up for reappointment.
Mr. Chair, can I make one comment?
Please.
You're interviewing Nancy Barr on Thursday, and there was a request from the chair and Ms. Barr that she be appointed to full membership as opposed to alternate for the Historical Commission. So just keep that...
But we would still appoint the ones that are listed here.
Yes.
So we just have another candidate.
Yes, I'm just letting you know that she would be moving, because currently she's an alternate that would be moving.
Yeah, there's a vacancy on, because of the, the passing of Mr. Aikman.
Okay. So we can accept three motions here if you are of a mind to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Frank Messina as a member of the Historical Commission until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or successor is appointed.
I'll second that. All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Stephen Burlingame as a member of the Historical Commission until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Robert Stevens as an alternate member of the Historical Commission until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked, or successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And for the Open Space Committee, we have one open alternate seat, three members up for reappointment, one alternate up for reappointment.
Miss?
And we have, I'm not sure why that, Dee Dee Holt, David Doherty, and Jack Farrell